Everybody, it's so good to see you all here. It's a beautiful afternoon. I know you'd rather be outside, but we have lots of good things to do here and we're very privileged to have you with us. So the first thing on our broadband authority agenda today is to approve the minutes from the March 21st, 2024 meeting. So do any of the supervisors or authority members, I should say, have any questions about the minutes, any additions or deletions you would like to request? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Damison. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the existing project updates from our partners who are with us, Chantel River Street and AEP, and we're very grateful to have you all with us. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Sandy.
All right. I'm gonna kind of give a broad overview first and then we'll open it up to our partners to kind of give updates on the specific projects. So just kind of by way of summary and recap, areas, the county has been active for several years and we've kind of covered a lot of this before, but this is kind of a current update through the 2024 cycle. A lot of our broadband investment has been through what is called VODI, which is the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. It's a program within the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state of Virginia level. We did initially get a small grant from the Virginia Tobacco Commission, which kind of started things off for us back in 2019, but as you can see here, we've been successful, really since 2020, of obtaining funding through the VODI program each year, so 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, and then just most recently, the announcement for 2024 project with a new partner in ZITEL, and we'll hopefully have time at the end to kind of do an introduction there. And so just to point out, you know, private investment, really over $39 million going into broadband through all these projects, as well as a county investment of about 8.6 million. And just kind of a reminder there is back when we got those ARPA federal funds, we were able to kind of allocate and dedicate about $7.7 million towards infrastructure investments, particularly in broadband here, but also some water and sewer infrastructure investments. And so in total, about 9,700 new wireline connections, in addition to the fixed wireless work that we had done back early in the program. And this is just a kind of a summary spreadsheet which you have in your packet, which just kind of shows the breakdown of each one by year. And so really, our projects that we talk about with broadband are really related to the funding grant. And so when I refer to 2021 project, that's really the grant that was a part of the 21, 2021 funding cycle. So you can see there in this chart, really, there's one in red there that we were not successful with getting. And so what we've tried to do with the 2024, and then what we'll be looking at with a future round of what's called BEAT funding, is be looking to fill that gap and be able to hopefully get us as close to 100% coverage and 100% connectivity in the county as we can through the BEAT process, and I'll talk about that just in a little bit as well. Any questions on that before I move on? So overall, like I said, about 39 million in private funding, in investments, 27.6 million in grant funding, and about 8.6 from county dollars, just to show comparison. And I will note, because I know Amanda's back in the room, is this really doesn't include the investment that AEP is putting in through their partnership with the River Street project, which is significant as far as providing that middle mile fiber.
Mr. Sandy, if you would, just take a quick minute and remind the authority about what BEAT is.
Sure. So all of this funding that you see here in front of you has really been state funding, so it's been state initiative funding. And I will just say that I hear a lot through a lot of the different meetings and discussions that I have is that the state of Virginia is really held as one of the frontrunners as far as this VODI program and the ability to kind of get broadband out to their state. And so across the country, I think Virginia is seen as kind of the model or the example of how to do that. And I think, you know, they've shown a successful pattern here for the last few years of getting broadband deployed throughout the state. What is coming along now, we could say maybe a little slower behind, is the federal government is coming behind with a new program called BEAT. And, you know, we like our acronyms, you can tell, so the federal program is BEAT, and so that will change kind of the way the system has been operating. So this will be federal dollars that will come to the state. About 1.4 billion is what the state of Virginia is supposed to get through this program. And then for the continued deployment, individual internet service providers will actually apply to the state for this federal funding. To a large degree, it removes us from the process. We'll still be involved in the process, but really, it'll be a grant contract between the state of Virginia and the individual internet service provider. So that could be Chantel, that could be River Street, that could be Verizon, it could be a number of different ISPs, whoever chooses to apply through that program. So what we're looking at in the state of Virginia is to really help us get to that 100% level, help us get to the finish line, if you will, will be this BEAT program across the state where individual companies will be applying in various counties and areas of the state to reach the finish line, so to speak. So it's kind of a handoff from the state funding over to the federal funding. And again, we are in a lot of ways removed from it, which is good. I think Brian will probably smile a lot, because anytime we have federal money, there's a lot of financial reporting and financial constraints that we have, which we will not have to worry about in this. We won't have to do a lot of the monthly reporting, we won't have to do a lot of the tracking, it'll really fall back on the state. However, you know, we still obviously want to stay involved, we want to be aware of what the activities are, and we want to make sure that everyone in the county is getting covered. So as we continue to work through this process, those companies that are applying through BEAT will be looking for letters of support from the county, which will help them in their scoring of their application, but it'll also give us an opportunity to stay engaged and stay involved in the process. We may want to look at developing an MOU with the companies, so there is, maybe there's a quarterly reporting where they come to the broadband authority and provide updates or some sort of, you know, connection, so we're still connected to the project and still can keep up with the project. So again, I think there's good and bad for us with it kind of turning more federal. As I said before, it kind of removes us from some of the federal requirements, but I think we should also anticipate that the project may take longer. I mean, that's just, I think, something you see through federal funding is sometimes that extends the projects, makes them take a little longer. Those processes aren't as succinct as they maybe were with the state. And so again, I think there's pros and cons to it, but the bottom line is I think we're hopeful that this additional funding from BEAT is going to help us get to the finish line and get everyone covered, you know, here in the next couple of years. So late this year, early next year will be the application process for the state. Again, I'll say the state is the first or second to actually have their program approved by the federal government, so out of the 50 states, again, we're kind of taking, I said "we," Virginia is kind of taking the lead role in that and has been very active and very engaged in that process. So we're continuing to move along through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
So we do have our partners with us today, and you'll hear updates on really our three active projects. And again, the Chantel can probably really be considered one project, but for us, we track them as two separate projects, one's a 2021 grant, one's a 2022. Same with River Street, there's a 2022 grant and there's a 2023 grant, but in essence, they're really one project that they're working on in the county. And so just a few minutes, they'll give you updates specifically to those projects and how those projects are going. Mentioned earlier that we did recently receive a notice of award for a 2024 grant, about four and a half million dollars from the state to work with a new partner in ZITEL. That's a small company out of Bedford County over in Manita. They have been working in Bedford, so we're kind of the second locality that they'll be working with to kind of deploy and expand their fiber network. We will continue to be working with them to get preauthorization from VDOT to go ahead and start engineering and start ordering materials as we continue to work on developing the contracts. So it's probably about a 90-day timeframe to develop the contracts with the state and then also develop the contract between ZITEL and the county. And as we mentioned just a few minutes ago, we're continuing to work with interested internet service providers, so ISP is an internet service provider, for the BEAT applications to finish out the deployment, and we'll be looking to provide letters of support for those partners that are, you know, coming forward to serve the rest of our residents. So just a quick note, you know, next steps, we're continuing to work with Chantel on River Street on those projects, 21, 22, and 23 grant projects. We're just really kicking off and starting the process with ZITEL for the 2024 grant application. And as I mentioned earlier, we're continuing those discussions on BEAT funding. Just before I turn it over to our partners, I did want to tell you just about some other initiatives that we're kind of working on in addition to deployment. So a lot of the BEAT funding from the federal government really puts broadband in two buckets, deployment and non-deployment. So deployment, you can really consider that as, that's the construction activities to actually get the fiber to somebody's house. Non-deployment is everything else. And so that could be affordability, that could be access, that could be digital equity, that could be a lot of other types of things, including cellular, increased cellular deployment. And so we are working on some things there, and I'll touch on those in just a second. We're also working on a new program that the state offered this year with some additional funding under the Make Ready program. So I'll give you a little bit of history here, is back two years ago, the state put in about $700 million of money into broadband, and so there's this huge influx of money. A lot of projects were awarded, a lot of construction activity was initiated and started. What we quickly found out as going through the process was that put a big strain on materials, it put a big strain on contractors, it put a big strain on permitting and what they call "make-ready work." And so you'll hear some of that later on today, but what that really means is with utility providers that own utility poles, anytime you want to attach additional fibers to those poles, there's a permitting process. And so literally, almost every single pole that you see in the county is kind of going to be looked at through this process and be evaluated as to whether it can hold any additional weight, hold additional fiber lines to it. And if not, that pole actually has to physically be replaced and a new pole installed and then all the wiring put back on the pole. And so for us in this county, it's well over 10,000, just on the Chantel project, is well over 10,000 poles that have to be looked at, evaluated, and in some cases, many cases have to be replaced. And so what that is called, it's all called "make-ready," and it's really, I guess, making those poles ready for those attachments. We've seen lots of problems there across the state. Again, I'll use general examples, but AEP, for example, is our utility provider and owns most of the utility poles, and I'm just making up numbers here, but just say on average, they had 100 permanent requests a month prior to this work, and now they have 500 a month because of the additional, because of the additional request. And so it's put a big burden on utility providers across the state, probably most notably to the co-ops who have very little staff. There's still a lot of electric co-ops across the state, they have very little staff to review these kind of things and update these things. And in a lot of cases, I think maybe the investment, the reinvestment in their poles and their infrastructure maybe hasn't happened over the years. And so what they were seeing was an increased cost and time to review each of these and make those necessary improvements. And in a lot of cases, they were not even getting paid for that. So let's just say a small co-op had to replace 50% of their poles, well, there was no funding as part of the program to help pay for that, so they were having to actually, in a lot of cases, pay for either all or a portion of those costs. And so anyway, the state last general assembly session kind of made an attempt to kind of help that, and they set aside some funding into what they call a "make-ready" program. And the idea was to kind of help move these projects along, help move some of these roadblocks, if you will, out of the way and kind of keep some of these projects going. And really, the state's major initiative is they have a lot of this federal money that they put into it that has to be spent. And so if these projects don't get completed on time, then they're having a compliance issue with those dollars. And so anyway, make a long story relatively short, the general assembly put some money, I think in three waves, they're doing like seven and a half million dollars, if I remember right, to kind of help with that. And so we're actually working with Chantel to prepare an application to help with some of that on our project, again, just to kind of help facilitate and move projects along. So that's one activity that we're working on. We're also working with an internal staff group on some additional grant funding that's become available for what they're calling the Virginia Affordability and Adoption Planning Grant. And again, this is really looking at ways that we can make the internet, make broadband more accessible. And so just as a couple of examples, we're working with the library system on how we can make things easier for people to reach the internet. You know, people may not have the ability to afford internet, they may not have internet at their home, but they can go to the library and they can use the system. The library, if you've been in there recently, has two new, what we call "privacy pods." And so we're looking at some opportunities there where people in those can use those pods, they can do telehealth visits, they can do, they can apply for jobs, they can, you know, do interviews, and they can have some privacy in those, but all of it, you know, being afforded through the ability to have internet access. And so that's one avenue. We're looking at opportunities through the Franklin Center to help with workforce development, to help with, you know, getting people connected with jobs, so forth. And then also looking at other opportunities like aging services, like are there ways we can continue to work with the older population that sometimes may be fearful of using the computer for certain things? You know, can we develop programs or assistance to help in those areas? So anyway, this grant program, the state has identified through some of that federal funding, would result in about $25,000 of funding to the county to help develop a plan to figure out how to implement some of these programs. And then following that, there would be additional funding that would help fund those opportunities. So again, as an example, if we wanted to buy some more of those privacy pods and put them in the Essex Center, there will be funding opportunities there that we could purchase those and put those in the Essex Center, or we could buy some new computers for the library. So things like that, that these programs will avail to us. So we're working on that with an internal working group. We're also working with state agencies on developing a program to enhance cellular availability. So for the last year or more, really been talking to the state about kind of what's the next step with the VODI program. Since the VODI program, the funding is now kind of shifting to the federal BEAT program, is what can we do with the VODI program to continue to help places like Franklin County? And so one of the needs that's still out there that I think we're all well aware of is there's still a lot of areas in this county that you can't make a phone call and you don't have cellular access. You might have a, the example I use is we may, we'll likely have people in our county who have a wired, they have 1 gigabyte speed to their house, but they can't walk out to the garden and make a phone call because they just don't have cellular access. And so we really need to be looking at pushing both of those fronts, increasing the cellular availability as well as getting wired line service to people's houses. So, and that's one of your legislative agenda items that, from the discussion on Tuesday. And so we've continued to talk with state agencies like the Secretary of Agriculture, like the Department of Public Safety, all of these agencies that have an interest in making sure people have good cellular availability, working with them to push this idea and see how the state can help, you know, facilitate increased cellular access, really using the same model as the VODI program, is working with those providers to put more antennas up on more towers, really, is what we're talking about. And so in some cases, building new towers, but as an example, we have a tower at Callaway to be able to go to Verizon, T-Mobile or whatever and say, "We can help you with funding to, if you'll locate on that tower and be able to provide service out in this area." So that's really what we're looking at and working on and going into this next session and next budget with the general assembly. Hopefully, we'll see some movement there to increase those opportunities with cellular availability. And along with that, as I mentioned earlier, the state is developing funding opportunities for non-deployment activities. And so we think there's also going to be some potential money in the BEAT program under the non-deployment side of funding to help with the cellular issue as well. So we may be able to actually move the needle a little bit on that cellular issue here coming up soon. So just a couple of quick updates, and that's really all I had. I'll turn it over to Chantel unless there's any questions you have for me.
So authority members, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Sandy?
Steve, I have a pretty broad question, and it's something that's, I don't know, it's been on my mind. How many, do you have a number for like, how many addresses in the Snow Creek district? Or how many addresses in the Blackwater or the Blue Ridge or anywhere that have been hooked up to internet using VODI funds?
Excuse me. I don't have it broken down by district, but I can. I mean, we can work with our providers and we can break it down by district to give you that information, so that's something we could develop and send back out to you.
Well, I would be curious to know how many, and especially my district, how many have actually been hooked up to high-speed internet by using that?
Got you. I think what we can do is probably give you the number that are currently connected and then the number that are projected to be connected, you know, because we're still obviously working through these construction grants. And then we have also the 2024, which is just starting. So we can probably tell you who's already gotten service in each district and then who is projected probably within the next year, and then beyond that would be, you know, the ones that we'd still need to reach out and get to.
Okay, and I ask that just because I get beat up pretty hard about people see that other people, and I don't know any in the Snow Creek district, so that would be helpful if you could send me that.
Yeah, so you're primarily in the River Street, West Piedmont project, Blue Ridge and Snow Creek mostly are in that project, which that project is a little further behind because it's a little later. It came later than the Chantel project. So most of the activity you've seen so far has been in the Westlake, Hardy and Boons Mill area, now working out towards Callaway. The River Street project, which Rob will talk to later, is one that's primarily in your area and the Blue Ridge district, which is moving now and kind of on its way, but it's further behind the Chantel project. So just to give you kind of perspective of how those are working.
Okay.
But we can, we can circle back with kind of a breakdown by district, by election district, because we don't really track it by district, but we can do that. That's not a, with our GIS folks and the providers, we can, we can kind of get those numbers that way.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate your question very much, you reading my mind. I had an earlier conversation with Mr. Sandy regarding, especially getting our newer supervisors' historical data and information, and we spoke about, and I had requested that we get district breakdowns on, you know, who's in service, who's not, what's left, the projected numbers and so forth, so that when you have constituent inquiries, you've got good data and we'll keep that updated.
Well, and something else I was thinking about, the VODI funds are supposed to be used for access to high-speed internet, especially for people who don't already have that access. And a lot of people come to me angry because they're like, "Well, I know those people already had internet and they've got, you know, getting new fiber running, we don't have anything." And that's where a lot of the frustration comes on my end.
Well, my goal is to help you and any other supervisors to understand why what you're seeing is what you're seeing. I think it's imperative that we get those types of things, Mr. Sandy, clear-cut for the authority members, because it's a little difficult to understand setting up here, you know, and listening to the updates and understand how they apply to what's going on today in your individual districts. Is that fair enough?
Sure.
Would that be helpful to you all?
Yeah, and I think there's a couple of answers there. One is, you know, some people probably had DSL, and so they had internet connectivity, but it didn't meet the definition of broadband. And so some people that had DSL are now getting faster internet, if you will, and it is being funded through VODI, even though they technically had service, because it was considered so slow that the state didn't really consider it service, if that makes sense. The other thing that's happened on some of these is, a lot of the numbers you'll see is what's actually been funded by the state. So let's use an example of 2,000 customers were funded by the state. Well, these companies, and oftentimes, they're hooking up well over 3,000 people in the project, so there's additional people that are being connected outside of the state funding, if that makes sense. So oftentimes, you'll see that as well, where, okay, the subsidized, if you will, houses was one number, but because they're out there and already doing the work, they may actually be adding more customers on. And in some cases, it could be overlapping service for, somebody that may have had access to another internet provider now has, now actually has two options for their internet service. But in most cases, those are not being funded by the state, so they're just kind of being extra connections that they're connecting. So sometimes there's multiple answers to the questions. The other things I'll say is, and I think these guys will probably share that with you, is both of them have developed websites and access where people can actually put their address in, and they can learn when the service is expected to get to their house. So as you're hearing from citizens, that's a great place to point them to say, hey, go to the River Street website or the Chantel website, or the county's website, which links to those, and put in your address, and it'll kind of tell you, you know, when you can expect to see that service kind of coming to your household.
Steve, one other thing, you mentioned the pole there at Callaway, the tower. I've had several people asking me, "How many customers are attached to that or using that?" Can you get that information?
I can. I can tell you how many are using that fixed wireless.
Great.
Off of that tower. So it's not cellular, it's just the fixed wireless.
Right.
Yeah.
The other thing, you was talking about the poles a while ago, all the poles that AEP is replacing, are the providers, when they string cable on it, are they renting that pole, paying a lease on that pole for the use of their, stringing their wire on it?
I'll let them answer that, but I think there is some lease payment or some sort of, I'm not sure about if it has to be replaced, who's paying for it, but I think there is a lease, I think there's leasing space, for lack of a better word, on those poles, but I'll let the experts maybe speak to that question.
They shaking their head, so I figured.
Thank you. All right.
Good questions?
I'll have Jessica come up if there's no further questions.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, Jessica.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Jessie Wilmer. I'm here representing Chantel today. I want to talk to you about the two projects that Chantel is working, both the 21 project and the 22 project. So first, I'll talk about, oops, I'll just click.
Yeah, you have to just have it.
Oh, scroll, okay, got it. So first off, I want to talk about the 22 project. So this is the larger of the two projects that we have, 3,508 underserved homes or locations, excuse me, and 520 miles of new plant that were proposed in this project for Chantel. So initially, it was a two-year project. We have asked for an extension to date to go to October of 2025, and that's been granted by the county and the state. So below is a breakdown of the percentage of the cost. Initially, if you remember, this was a hybrid. We initially applied as a wireless, fixed wireless application and a wireline application. FCC changed the rules a little bit on us, and then it went to a fully wireline project for us. So what you see now is the cost for the full wireline project and no longer any of the fixed wireless. So VODI is contributing 38%, the county is contributing 20%, 6.1 million, and then Chantel is contributing 4, 41%, 12 and a half million, for a total cost of 30 million for the whole project. So this map is a quick breakdown of our location areas for cabinets. So when we deploy our wireless, or, excuse me, wireline network, each area has a cabinet location or a POP location, and that's where all the connectivity goes for that particular area, back into that POP or that hub location. So we've got a Boons Mill cabinet, a Hardy cabinet, Westlake, Redwood, and the Faram cabinet. All those are 100% completed now, powered up, and have connectivity to them. All those are 100% completed now, powered up and have connectivity to them. Oops, doesn't quite get it, but, so accomplishes so far for the 22 project. So to date, we have 1,178 locations now have broadband delivered out of our 3,508 locations. So that's 34% of our project now has connectivity and able to sign up for for internet service. To date, we've got all our design, all our engineering work completed and permitting substantially submitted. So all of our permits to to AEP, VMRC, railroads, Verizon, CenturyLink, all those are substantially submitted. As we go through the project and find maybe we have an area that that has really high make-ready costs, we'll pull back if, once we get those estimates and then have to reapply for maybe less poles and then we go underground in certain areas. So there is a little bit of push and pull when it comes to our permitting as we go through the project. So if you see that number kind of go up and down and and in submittals, you know, maybe there's a late submittal, it's because we had to pull something out and replace it. So we do have a little bit of push and pull there with our permitting. Again, we've got our five fiber cabinets fully constructed and in service. And then to date, we've spent 12.4 million dollars, or 41% of our our budget spent through, and that's through July of 2024. So currently in construction, we've got 188 locations that are in construction today. We anticipate those to be in service by the end of third quarter, end of September. And that'll give us a total of 1,366 serviceable by the end of September, and that'll be about 39% of our project. Additionally, fourth quarter, we anticipate about 665 more locations to be under construction, which is about 50%, 58% of our locations. Those probably will not be released to sales or in service by the end of the year. We're still waiting on a significant number of permits in those areas, but we've done our best to at least release the portions that we have permits. We have VDOT permits, we have some of the aerial permits through AEP. We're going to release those and get as much done as we can while we're waiting for the remainder of those permits to come in. So again, we'll, we'll have another 665 under construction, but again, we are waiting on some of those permits to come in as well. So just a quick map to show you our our locations. The green ones are the ones that are in service today. The yellow ones are currently under construction. And if you remember, Shentel, just to kind of put it in perspective here, why you see some red dots amongst the green ones. Shentel had an existing coax network in Franklin County prior to VADI. Where it makes sense for us to do just a small coax extension, maybe it's a half a mile, maybe it's a mile to get to a couple of these homes that are just off our existing coax plant, we're going to do a small extension to get to those. The other ones, we have to build a much longer fiber route to get to. So those are called designated service areas, they're much larger locations, but that's why you kind of see some of those sporadic red dots in there that we haven't constructed some of those smaller coax plants yet. So yellow areas are currently under construction. Again, we anticipate those to be released to sales and in service by the end of September. The ones in purple are the 665 that I talked about that that we're going to get started on construction and we're waiting on about 30 AEP permits in those areas. Again, we, hopefully we'll, we'll reach that goal and try to get those done before the end of the year, but again, we're, we're strapped by by permitting there. And then the red dots are the ones that we have remaining, permits are submitted, plans are done, we're just anticipating and waiting on our permits. So jumping down to the 21 project, this is a much smaller one, 612 locations. The 21 grant was a little bit different, though that one included vacant lots, the other ones didn't. So the breakdown on that is 417 homes and then 195 vacant lots for the 21 project. 28 miles of new plant. Again, that's a two-year contract and to kind of get it in line with the 22 project, that one will also be extended to October of 2025. This one, 51% is a VADI contribution. The county contribution is 10%, $200,000. Shentel's contribution is 38%, $700,000, for a total of 1.8 million for that smaller Accomplishments on this one, so to date, 107 underserved locations plus 32 vacant lots now have broadband delivered to them and can get service, 23%. Again, we have all our design and permits submitted, cabinets are fully constructed. And to date, we've spent just shy of $600,000 for that project through July. It's 32% of the total project cost. Currently in construction, we have 49 locations and 26 vacant lots. And we're targeting September to get those completed and into service as well. Additionally, for the fourth quarter, we anticipate another 103 locations to be under construction, to bring us up to about 57% of those total homes that were contracted for. And again, those are the same way where we've gotten those out to construction while we wait on some of the outstanding permits. And that one has seven outstanding AEP permits that we are pending. This map is a little bit harder because they're kind of small but to see, but again, the green dots are what is in service today. Yellow dots, you probably can't even see them because they overlap, are what's under construction. Purple dots is what will be under construction in the fourth quarter. And then the red dots are currently in permitting, they just aren't far enough along to to actually start construction, we just don't have enough of those permits yet. So just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the permitting data that we have. So to date, on, on both of the projects together, we're just shy of 500 permits that we've submitted to AEP, CenturyLink, Verizon, VDOT, VMRC, Norfolk Southern. To AEP, we've got 10,500 poles that we've submitted to them for application. Most of the time, those, those applications are about 50 poles apiece. Sometimes they're much smaller. If we've got a little tiny area that we need to complete, sometimes it's much as, you know, one to two poles, up to 50 poles. So the 50-pole ones take much longer for for AEP to to do their fieldwork, to analyze, get the make-ready estimates out to us, et cetera. So there is a little bit, when you talk about average number of days that that we're waiting on an AEP permit, there's kind of a fluctuation there. Some of them were at 550 days, while others are, we get them in less than a month. So it's, it's kind of hard to to gauge that average number of days, but on average, 290 days from from when we apply for a permit to AEP. They've done their engineering, they've done their make-ready estimates, we've approved that estimate, and they do the make-ready work and then it's ready for us to attach to it. So there is a lengthy amount of time between when we can apply for a permit, or when we do apply for a permit, till actually it's ready for us to do our installation on the, on their poles. We do have some that are currently, we do have estimates from AEP. I think there's about 1,000 poles or maybe a little more that we do have estimates, meaning they've done the engineering work, they've given us the cost for this make-ready. We have to look at that as a holistic, if you've got a polygon of, say, 10 miles, give or take, and we have estimates or maybe four of those permits, maybe it's only five miles of it. Kind of need to wait till that other five miles of estimates come in so we can look and see, okay, does it make sense to completely pay AEP's estimate on those poles? Or do we, do we pay some of it and then go buried in other locations? So there's a lot of give and take of why we don't immediately approve a permit when we, when we do get them. So I know AEP might speak to that, we do have some that are in that stage right now. Verizon, it's kind of a big number, 342 days, but comparably, we only have 60 poles that are Verizon poles in the county, so we aren't terribly concerned about that. We do have some that that we probably will pivot and go buried because we're not getting the permits in a, in a time. But but again, as we wait for the AEPs to come in around it, we just kind of make that push and pull decision last minute. VDOT, we have a very good relationship with VDOT currently. We generally don't apply for our VDOT permits until we're about 30 to 60 days to construction, mostly because we don't want to overload them with permits that that may be a year from now to to actually construct. And then we also have a bond that we keep with VDOT. If we applied for every single permit, it would be in the $20 million reins of a permit or bond, and we just can't do that. So we kind of apply for them as we go. And generally, they've, they've given us permits within about 30 days, which is pretty good. VMRC is our stream crossing permits. Anytime we cross a stream, either aerial or underground, we do have to apply for a permit to VMRC. It goes through DEQ, Army Corps of Engineers. So those do take a little bit of time to get through. A lot of times we'll release to construction, build everything other than the stream, and we're kind of waiting on a stream permit to to kind of finish it out. Same thing with Norfolk Southern, our railroads, probably heard a lot about those. Those are our toughest thing to to kind of get through. We, with the new legislation, we do get the permit fairly quickly. I'd say less than 60 days, we get a permit from the railroad. It's the back end of the the construction monitoring that's generally 128 days or more until we can, they have to have their folks onsite while we do any construction. And just to get them onsite is is a lot of coordination effort and to get them onsite. So we try to do as many as we can, we try to bundle them together, and while we've got somebody here from RailPros in the market, we tend to try to knock some out as as quickly as we can, even though it maybe doesn't make sense to do that construction and you have fiber coiled on either end for months and months, we just try to get those done as as we can. So summary, we know that pole owners are overwhelmed with aerial permits and and they are behind schedule. We do know that. We have weekly meetings with AEP where they provide us updates. We've given them priorities, because, you know, 10,500 poles is a lot to to juggle. We've given them priorities of where we want them to focus on permits and engineering. And as we go through some of those, you know, we try to release those areas as we, as we get permits. We're not letting the grass grow under us. As soon as we get a permit, we're, we're pretty much out there getting that permit done when we can. We've spent a significant amount of funds to mitigate our risks. So we have added additional staff internally, we've done more buried work than we originally anticipated in our grant application. We've expedited construction, we're doing a lot more temp attachments than we anticipated doing. So so if AEP or or the other aerial permittee says, you know, you can, you can safely attach to this pole and we don't have a permit yet, we will go ahead and temp attach. The problem with that is we have to pay for it twice. So we go out, attach it, get it in service, and then we have to go back, maybe AEP has to replace a pole, we have to go back out and reattach that new pole. So so we are taking that risk. Sometimes we we are doing things twice, just so we can temp attach. Generally, aerial poles, once they're permitted, we can get the construction done fast. As an example, out in Boons Mill, we had a 25-mile build that we released this spring to construction. 25 miles, almost entirely aerial work. It only took us three weeks to get that one constructed and in service. So once we get permits, it will roll fast. It's just that, got to get over that hump to get the permits. Again, we're, we're trying to find ways to creatively get broadband delivered to the county. Again, we're trying to work with a railroad doing multiple crossings at one time, doing temp attachments. In areas that it makes sense, we'll pivot to buried. It is more costly to bury, but we are pivoting some areas to go buried instead of aerial. So at the end of the day, we can only go so fast. We'd like to go faster, we have crews kind of on our heels trying to get us to move a little quicker. We'd like to move quicker, but we can't move as fast as the, as the permits will allow us to. And then lastly, we are committed to to getting this project completed by October of 2025. We're, we've been in this community for a long time and we'd like to remain here providing you golf service. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessie. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll look.
Yes, Mr. Quinn.
So a couple of questions regarding the cost for the buried versus aerial. Roughly, how much more is it for the buried line? And I know it's going to vary by terrain and a lot of variables, but just like, is it two times or three times? What's the average cost?
So generally, I'll just kind of throw out the general number, $11,000 a mile for aerial. Go up to $65,000, $70,000 a mile for buried, depending on rock.
Oh, that's good.
And when you're doing 520 miles, that can add up really quickly.
And then, second question, when you do bury, does anybody ever piggyback on your effort to put other lines below grounds and ground and eliminate the poles? Or is it always just you putting your lines in?
Generally, it's just us putting the lines in. The only thing that we'll piggyback on is if, generally if there's a home that maybe they're under construction or whatever, we'll just go ahead and bury a conduit to their house to do a drop, but we will do that. In some locations in our, if it's a major backbone build, we'll, we'll put two conduits in the ground so we can use it now and kind of future-proof it. You know, we don't know what's coming in the next 20 years, we'll have a conduit in the ground if we, while we've already got a.
I was just wondering, because AEP is always trying to bury more lines to avoid outages. And so I thought they'd be backing on your effort to try to eliminate some of the poles. But anyway, thanks.
Any other questions? Welcome, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for being with us.
Oh, you told me I have 10 minutes, not that you need another 10 minutes. I got you.
Yeah.
There you go. I appreciate that. Afternoon, Rob Taylor with River Street Networks, here to give you an update on where we stand with our build. Just a quick overview, we're passing just under 2,800 locations, it's about 285 miles of fiber. Total project cost is just under 25 million. We're bringing in just about 4.8. We were able to get almost 900,000 in what federal funding called Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. AEP is bringing in just over $10.2 million in construction aid. And the county put $1.8 million into the projects. This is an overview for both 2022 and 2023, and so the VADI funding is 7.2 million. If you look at the map there, you'll say, well, why is 2022 and 2023 so intermixed? And the deal is, is that the definition of broadband changed in those years. If you had service that was less than 25 and 3, then you were fundable in 2022. Definition changed in 2023 to 100 by 20. So anybody who had fiber service or any internet services 25 and 3 and above, but less than 100 by 20, was then fundable in 2023. So that's why you have those differences. If you go to myriverstreet.net, this is a webpage that we have out there, you can scroll down, about halfway down, you'll see fiber build. You select the county that you're in and it will bring up the county. You can then either look at that on that view, or you can go below the map and click it to make it a larger view. You can either look and find your dot on the map, or you can go and put your address in, and it will bring you up and let you know where you stand in construction. For us, blue is future build, yellow is under construction, gray is pre-order, that means it's in, it's, construction is in process or almost completed and we're probably in the testing phase. And then green means service is available. So currently in the county, we have 42 locations that are available for service, and we have 15 locations that are in pre-order. Here's a blow up of that to show you a little bit better view. These, these locations were basically getting service out of Pitts Wania County, so we're able to bring services over from Pitts Wania County and into Franklin County in these Currently, this is information that Amanda is going to provide an update, but when they requested the slides we sent, and this is where we stood at the time. So on Dickinson Road, Phase 1 or Part 1 has been finished, it's 6.1 miles. They were working on Part 2, which is 10.2 miles to be completed. The schedule for Sega Road was under review with the fiber engineering and AEP was doing the make, make-ready work to schedule Endicott Route. So again, this, if you look, it gives you an idea on the map. So again, this, if you look, it gives you an idea on the map where we're talking about. And and here is a picture of some of the crews doing the work out in the field. Previous to this meeting, Amanda said she had an update, and I'll bring her up and let her give you the update on where they stand.
Madam Chair, Members of the Authority, Amanda Cox with Appalachian Power. It's nice to see you all. Thanks for having me. Yes, I have an exciting update. We're at 19 miles on the Dickinson Route, so almost complete there. So that's really exciting. We've had our second meeting with River Street on splicing. So they'll splice in, we'll splice in, we'll test, we'll turn up, we'll hand it over, and River Street will start connecting customers, Mr. Mitchell, in your district, to make sure that they have access to reliable connectivity. So we are really excited about what's going on in Dickinson for Sago. That's the next segment we're working on, it's 12.3 miles. We're also doing make-ready on Sago right now. And then we do not have any delays with River Street, but they're working on their splicing design that does not impact what we're doing right now. We'll have the same process that we went through with Dickinson. And then we have a 25 miles that we're we're building in Endicott, and we're in the engineering phase on that. Make-ready is up and going in that area as well. So again, make-ready is, we've been talking about it a lot today, pole replacement, just making sure the structural integrity of the pole is intact. And the cool thing about what we're doing is that, you know, River Street is in the power zone. So they are about a foot below the neutral. They drop right into the comm space and then connect customers. So as we are constructing and fiber is is getting strong, that the make-ready piece moves a lot faster than you see on other projects. So we have really good success and progress in Franklin County. Henry County and Patrick County are a little behind. We had some permitting delays in those areas, but they are also both under construction. So right now, all three counties are in construction. Franklin is is just definitely ahead of of the other two at this time.
And one thing to bring up, when you think about poles, you know, a lot of people think, well, it can't hold the weight. But the main deal is, it can't give you the height, right? So you can't have an attachment that is so many feet off the ground. It's got to be a minimum standard. So by saying in the electrical space, we're able to keep that height requirement, which happening with a lot of the others, if they're coming in and there's already communication wires, each communication's got to have a foot clearance. So if you got a cable provider, got another foot, you got a TV provider or a telephone provider, you got another foot, and the next thing you know, you want to bring the fiber in, well, now that's not meeting the minimum height requirement off the ground, that pole's got to be replaced. So that's why with this partnership, we're not having to do that, it's because we're staying up in that power space, because they're pulling in the fiber and then we're extending it down into the communication space just below that and able to do our taps.
This fiber has to have a dual purpose. So for us, it's our internal communications, and so we're, it is safely in the power space for us. And then, go ahead.
I was just gonna go, because we had 10 minutes, and I think we-
We got two more, but I'm going to talk make-ready for a second, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions on the, on that?
Any questions for-
Any questions?
I believe, looking at, can you go back to the map where it showed the ones, I believe I answered my question that I asked Steve earlier?
Is it this map?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have any hooked up? No Creek District?
None, all right. So and here's the other deal. When you say hooked up, we say passing, right? If if you build it, they will come is not the case, right? If we pass that house and they can get service, we're not going to hook them up until they order the service. See what I mean? So we're we're dealing in passing. So right now, we're passing 45 locations that can get the service. How many of them have signed up for it yet? I'm not sure. I could check on that. But in your area, we don't have any active passings yet. As soon as we get the fiber spliced in and get the testing done, then we have to extend it back over to internet access. And I'll find out when that's going to happen and let you know when we have approximate time on these locations, Dickinson Road, when they'll have access to service. But then we have to get them to sign up for the service.
So we don't have a timeline yet as to when they would be?
I can find, I can find out, yeah. I'll find out when the Dickinson area is going to have access.
It's it's very soon. I mean, we're in the last stages of that splicing piece.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what she just gave you was not where we were standing a week ago. They have made huge strides over the last week. I didn't even know we were at the splicing point. We went from six miles to 25 miles.
Right. And and I know it's not, I know everybody's trying as hard as they can. I get beat up over this bad. And 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 so the year the grants came out, the '22, '23, I saw the same years on the Chantel one. And there's a lot more progress, but no one-
Chantel was '21, '22, we're '22, '23.
And you have a six-month regulatory window that you have to go through with AEP because we're a regulated utility. So we have to go before the commission. They pretty much take six months.
After they sat the judges, if you remember, the SEC did not have but one judge for months. So we had, we had a-
We've had some delays.
Yeah.
And I know that doesn't make it any better, but-
I I know, and and I remember having that same conversation a long time ago about the SEC and-
Yes.
Can I, as soon as you all have a date, can I please have that?
Yes, absolutely.
So how do citizens know when you've made the pass to sign up for service?
So first of all, what we're encouraging is to get people to go to the page and and put their interest. All they have to, they can register right now. If you're one of these dots, you can go in, you can register to let you, us know you're interested. What that does is that will queue up RCSRs that, once the service is available, they'll reach back out by whatever means, either phone call, mailing, or whatever, to say, service is now available. In addition to that, we do billboards, we do radio ads, we will do direct mailings to each of these addresses. And people in these areas will be getting mailers, postcards typically saying, fiber's coming, fiber's here, go here to sign up for service, or call our toll-free number. We've done community events, so we'd love to get a community calendar if you're having any any festivals or anything like that. We typically like to set up a tent there to do signup days. We did some open houses with the schools in Pittsvenia County to do signup as well. We'll go to typically to community anchor locations like the local volunteer fire department and bring in food trucks and do a signup day that way as well. But again, for us, we want to get the customers on there as quickly as possible, because the only way we're going to get that seven-some million dollars back is to get, start getting services off of it. So whereas-
Whenever you want to line up one of those open houses, let me know. Be happy to help you with that.
All right.
Yeah, I think that would be good in your district.
It would be very good.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't we just-
Could even be a signup event, like a, everybody come to the community center, sign up and or talk about it.
We do that quite, but we want to get further along so we get enough activity. But right now, they can actually go in there registered that they're interested, and that will put them in the queue for our CSR to reach out to them.
Well, if you'd work with Mr. Mitchell, maybe about setting an open house date?
Okay.
Would that be good, Mr. Mitchell? All right, Ms. Amanda?
All right. So I think Steve did a really good job teeing up the conversation about the ARPA funds and the 800 or so million dollars that were pumped into the Commonwealth, all at the same time for broadband projects. And and, you know, it's really good. It's great we're getting connectivity, but we're not an outlier. I mean, the the utilities got hit really hard with with requests. And, you know, Jessie's mentioned, just 10,500 in Franklin County. Well, every county, city, whatever it may be, has a project, and they all think it's the most important project. And if they're in our service territory, they're all very important to us. But we are having some delays. Steve sent me a message, and, you know, I was like, all right. And then I start calling my guys, and I know they see my name, and they're like, oh, God, what does she want? So, you know, I get on the calls with them, and I'm like, help me explain what's going on. And you're correct, we had a decline in some of the construction piece that we were going through over the last few weeks. And what it really came down to is the crews being pulled off for storm restoration, both in Virginia, West Virginia, Hurricane Debbie, things of that nature. We provide mutual aid. They make double time what they do as they're doing the work for us, and I get it. And most of them go to work storm restoration. So when I looked at the drop in construction, that definitely seemed to be what the issue was there. We do have a delay in engineering. We're looking at that right now. What can we do to push this engineering piece further along? Jessie mentioned the timeline. It might be longer days for some of those poles, but they're also broken out into priorities. So if we get a priority nine, we're not going to look at that before we're going to look at a 1, 2, or 3 that Chantel wants us to look at. So that also, you know, escalates the number of days that some of those requests are getting looked at. We have four crews working on the project right now. We've requested an additional two that we should see at the 1st of September. And then I've also requested that we have some of our transmission crews that are floating around job to job to pitch in as much as we can to try to crank out some of this work that we're behind on. Jessie did mention this before, there are 1,045 poles sitting in Chantel's bucket. So it's it's their chance to review what we've come up with. This is the charge, this is how long it's going to take, this is what it looks like, and it's their prerogative how long they sit on those. We can't do anything until they say, absolutely, let's get moving on it. As Jessie mentioned, we are doing our best to offer temporary attachments, because we understand the importance of getting all the citizens connected quickly. I understand what she says about that sometimes being a double charge. It's kind of, you know, one or the other. You know, you could get connected faster, or you have to wait a little bit longer, unfortunately, just because of the volume of requests that we have. So, you know, we are doing our very best. We're adding crews where we can. I just don't want you to think that Franklin County is the only county that is dealing with this, because there are delays all across the Commonwealth, in the, Steve mentioned the co-op areas, in Dominion Territory, and then our territory as well. So, you know, we do have weekly meetings, so we'll make sure that we know exactly what those priorities are and that we're going forward as best as we can. We're looking at internal labor, contract labor, how can we speed it up? But sometimes, we're just, we're at our point. We're doing every single thing that we can do, along with keeping the lights on for everybody else, which is our number-one function. So sometimes, whether it's storm restoration or different things happening, we pull every crew off to restore power. That's that's our primary goal, is to have everyone connected. So we are, you know, it's a balance, and it's not been comfortable. It's really cool, it's really good that our our customers and our communities are getting connected, but there are just a lot of growing pains. And we've had a lot of conversations with the legislature, with the state, with VATTI. As as these B dollars come on board, we've got to be aware of all steps, all challenges, all issues that that may arise, so that we're not running into deadlines that kind of make us feel antsy and like we're not delivering like we should be on time. I never had a conversation about make-ready when this 800 million came out. All these applications came, yep, we want to do it, communities want to be connected, but nobody, everybody wanted to get the projects out, but we really weren't thinking about everything that it took. So I know that they're working on that with the B dollars. I think we're going to be very diligent to make sure that we set expectations and that we can meet those goals. Any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions for Amanda? Comments? Amanda, we certainly are, we are aware of the, it's a compression issue across the state, and we understand that. And of course, we also have to meet expectations on our end with our constituents. So that's why we're trying to ensure that we've got the latest and greatest data and information so that we can be accurate in setting expectations as well. So anything any of you guys can do to help us along those lines is is certainly appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. And we will do our best to be a partner in that, and that's why I'm a proud resident of Franklin County. I think you guys do a very good job for your your residents. So thank you so much. Do not hesitate to reach out to me. Jessie, I'm going to make sure we know exactly that we're on the same page for everything, and we're going to do our best to work as quickly and safely as possible.
Well, thank you, Amanda. We appreciate you being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sandy? Do you have nothing else?
I'd like to just give you guys a big shout-out. Thank you for being with us this afternoon. Great information. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the, Steve, did you want to talk about the VATTI Grant Award and the introduction of ZITEL?
I think I covered it earlier. I don't see ZITEL here, so I was just going to make an introduction. If you remember, last fall, for, so for the couple newly elected, probably November, we were having this conversation about our next VATTI grant. And we actually had three providers that we were working with to decide, and and the the authority ultimately made the decision to move forward with ZITEL. Cost-effectively, that was the lower option as far as the county contribution. If you recall, it was a $10,000 contribution. Anyway, we went through that process with them. We filed the application, and we were successful. We were one of 10, 10 awards that were made this year. So as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we've we've been very successful through the VATTI program and and feel very fortunate that we've been able to to get those dollars, even though it comes with some of those growing pains we just, we just heard heard about. You know, but we continue to be able to get those dollars. We have not had to pay any of those dollars back, and we've been, you know, continuing to move forward. So, you know, we've been successful there. Just, really, it was just going to be an introduction of of them as a new partner, since we haven't really worked with them before, but we'll be hearing from them more. We'll we'll have another meeting probably in the next month or two to be approving the contract with them and and moving forward in that direction. So that's really kind of about all for for that project. But we do, the next step in that project will be a prior authorization letter to to allow us to to move forward with engineering. Even though we're not technically under contract, the state will issue kind of a preliminary approval for them to go ahead and get started, get some of those permits in the queue so so they can start working through those permits. So that'll be the next step, and then the contracts, the actual award and signing of the contracts will will come right after that, and then we'll be able to start construction on that project, hopefully by the end of the year.
Well, on behalf of the Authority, Mr. Sandy, we are very grateful for the successful grant application. You guys knocked those grant applications out of the park, and so we really are grateful to you and staff for helping us to get that award in place. Okay, next on the agenda, does any of the Authority members, do you have any comments, questions, any issues you'd like to bring up? Everybody good? Okay, then I will accept a motion to adjourn the broadband authority.
Should I move?
And second?
Second.
Thank you. All those opposed? I'm sure not. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we are so adjourned. Thank you all. And we'll take about a five-minute break to get set up for the continuation.
Get out of here at a decent time. I'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon for this work session, and we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Mitchell will be back in here in just a minute. But our first line of business will be our invocation by Supervisor Jamison, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Quinn. Will everyone please stand?
Appreciate everybody coming out today. Thank you. Dear Lord, we just come to you now and ask your blessings and your guidance as we go into this meeting. Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings we have, Lord, and all your loving grace. Lord, we just want to raise Ronnie up to you and just ask that you continue and give him a full recovery, and bless his family and watch over them. Lord, we just ask your guidance now as we go into a meeting, and we ask for your wisdom and use the sermon. In Christ's name we ask you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Are there any concerns regarding the amended agenda as presented? All the board members? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I will, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the agendas presented. All in favor, let be known I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Records show there were none opposed. Okay, approval of December board meeting? Mr. Whitlow, do you have a consensus on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Following Tuesday's meeting, I think we reached out to board members, and we're looking at Thursday, December the 12th, to hold that December board meeting. That will be on a Thursday afternoon. So we would just need approval from the board to change, to change that date. I believe it was December the 19th, I believe it was the Tuesday, and we would change that to December 12th, the Thursday.
All right. Board, what's your pleasure? Do we have a motion to approve this change?
I will, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the change to December the 12th. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to change the December meeting to December Thursday, December the 12th. All in favor, let me know in saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Records show there were none opposed, so we're good to go for December the 12th. All right, capital projects and facilities review. We'll have our work session on capital projects and facilities. This roster.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as staff prepares the PowerPoint presentation, I think we'll start out this afternoon's work session just, we'll, we'll take the pressure off the board today. We're not necessarily looking for any approval or anything from the board. This is really an informational session early on to kind of revisit our previous capital plan. I know it's been some time, it's been a short time really since April, but April seems like many moons ago since we put the previous or the current budget behind us. And so we know we're headed into budget season. We also have been working with our financial advisors and a couple of things today that we really wanted to, to drill down on specifically are some of those large capital items. Staff will walk the board through our roof replacements, our HVAC replacements. In addition, we'll talk about some of those large capital items that I mentioned earlier that may require some debt financing. And in addition, on the public safety side, and that's a large space, and so we could, we could spend many, many hours on public safety, but we really want to drill down specifically on ambulance replacements today and our ambulance schedule. Because with that, and you'll see from the information we're going to show you today, those costs continue to increase significantly so. So that being said, we'll, we'll get started with today's presentation. Of course, the capital improvement plan was adopted by the board again on April the 8th. And just a couple of highlights here, we think it's important for the board and for us to really review is that, you know, that CIP included about a million dollars in carryover funds to assist with those capital needs. Mr. Carter shared a little bit with you on Tuesday on that, noted that it's the proposed budget, of course initially was 45 cents and of course that ultimately was reduced to 43. And so we reduced that capital budget, the CIP, by about one and a half million dollars. So the most significant portion of that was that fire apparatus line item, 850,000. We also reduced the budget by 500,000 on the school capital side, if you all recall, for buses. And so, all that said, I think we, we can all agree that we did put a significant amount of funding for recurring to capital, to our capital improvement plan, our capital budget, and thankfully so. Did we get all the way maybe of what we need? Not necessarily, but I think we took a large step toward adding reoccurring dollars to capital this year. So congratulations really to the staff and the board and working with that. But yet we know there's still always capital needs. And so Mr. Carter mentioned on Tuesday that our year-end capital or surplus, I should say our year-end surplus of carryover funds, to really balance out that capital that we cut out, it's about two and a half million dollars. And so right now, as Mr. Carter noted on Tuesday, staff is still working with year-end and closeout and we'll be bringing some recommendations to you likely at your September meeting on that. Much of that is noted on Tuesday, we'll be prioritizing those capital items that we couldn't get to. And so, all that said, we know we have those large capital projects that I mentioned earlier, building renovation, construction, that's likely going to be needed to be funded. Those are those large projects. We've talked a lot about the 911 centers, maybe our next priority on the county side, a significant project that really needs to be addressed. And so the, the CIP really doesn't address those large capital needs also from like water and sewer. And so I just say that noting that previously we were fortunate to receive some ARPA funds, CARES funds, and we really worked to leverage those dollars with our utility providers. And you just heard from the broadband authority meeting, we leveraged about 7.7 million dollars on, on about 27 million dollars in grant funding from VODI. That 7.7 went a long way to leverage a lot of that work. And then also I would say with the Water Authority, the 3.2 million leveraged, the Water Authority to put up another 50% where we can do projects like the water system at Union Hall, sewer, lift stations and so forth at Westlake and the growing 220 corridor. So point going forward, if there are opportunities as we look at carryover dollars, you will likely hear from staff the opportunity to set aside those dollars for future water and sewer projects. Primarily, we know we need them, number one. Number two, we know that federal funding like ARPA and CARES is likely not in the future. And so for us to continue to build out our village plans, you'll hear a lot about that later in our comprehensive plan session, zoning ordinance work and so forth later, those dollars will be very beneficial. And, and I think we've used to leverage those and maximize whenever we can get state funding or the Water Authority regional funding. So all that said, we, we're going to ask Brandy now to walk us through, we've spent a lot of time, Brandy has spent a significant amount of time over the last year or so really looking at our HVAC and our roofs. That is something that is ongoing. It is not necessarily new construction build, it's our existing facilities. And we know our existing facilities require continual funding every year if you're replacing a roof, if you're replacing HVAC. So Brandy's done some work and she's going to walk the board through that as well as some of the other capital needs on the general property side. So Brandy, thank you.
All right, good afternoon. I'm going to jump right into the roof assessments that we've had done. Earlier this year, we engaged a company named Garland to come in and do roof assessments on seven of our, our larger facilities. So those are going to be your YMCA, the library, the Essex Center, the Franklin Center, the courthouse, the government center and the Gooood building. So I just wanted to very quickly, since this is a pretty new assessment that we've had done, just walk you through kind of what these look like when we get the results back. You can see from the inspection photos, they first, they fly a drone, they photograph everything, then they get up on the roof and really start documenting any type of issues or concerns they're going to have and document the damage for us so we know moving forward what type of work we're going to need to do. So this is the YMCA roof. After they do the physical assessment, they provide us with a replacement budget. And the way they do it is they provide a good, better and best option along with the prices that are associated with that. They also break down whether it's a full replacement of a roof or if the roof is in a condition where we could come in and really do some restoration or repair. So like on this one, the good is like a 20-year option, the better 30, and the best would be 40. And then they'll make a recommendation of which of those categories they feel would be appropriate given the usage of the facility. Once we know the good, better, best options, they do come in. And for each of those options, they provide a realistic life expectancy if we were to go with that option, along with the pros and cons for each of them. The end product is a roof capital plan. So on this, we did have one facility that had poor failing roof system and that was the YMCA. The good part about that being the one that was, that was the worst is we do have a million dollars in federal earmark funding that we have put aside for the roof and the HVAC replacement at the facility. So that, the total of those two projects is going to eat up all of that 1 million dollars plus some money that we've already set aside for the rest of that project. We did have one other facility that was rated poorly and that was the library. So that's a two to four-year restoration. And then we have three that were fair to poor. So that'll be our Essex Center, Franklin Center and courthouse. So those are either going to be a three to five or a four to six-year remaining life expectancy. The last three are in fair condition, that'll be the government center, the Gooood building, and then a second part of the courthouse. The first one was just a partial restoration. So you'll see those in either the four to six or five, five to seven-year replacement range. Looking at HVAC replacements, you guys have seen this slide a couple of times before. We have an inventory about of 111 units that does not include the YMCA. And we're looking really in, in the next 10 years, we have some significant work to do on these. The 2.3 million dollars does not include the 650 that was shown on the, the last slide, or the, the money that would be associated with the YMCA roof repair. So we're still thinking that it'll easily go over a million dollars. So this total number including the Y is going to be more, I would say 2.7, 2.9 million. And that'll be for a 10-year period. We do not price out like the 10-plus year replacements because it's, it'd be a complete shot in the dark for us to try and guess how much it's going to cost to replace them in 10 years. So for roof repair replacements, our roof capital plan total that I just showed you was the 3.7 million dollars. It does not include any kind of smaller roofing projects. So if we had to re-roof the step building or the old Thurmond Insurance Building, it's not included in that total. Our approved five-year CIP currently includes $90,000 a year annually or 450 dollar, or 450,000 total for that five-year period. So if we were to fully fund the capital plan over the suggested seven years, we'd have to increase that amount to roughly 550,000 annually. For HVAC replacements, the 10-year HVAC replacement total, as I said, was around 2.3 million. The approved five-year, five-year CIP has 180,000 annually or 900,000 total over the five-year period. Approved amount will need to be increased to approximately 200,000, so not that much annually to keep up with that zero to five-year projects. And then for the five to 10-year projects, the approved amount would need to increase to around 300,000 annually to keep up with those needs.
Brandy, if, if I may, just to point out to the board here is, is on the slide, Brandy noted, of course, that five-year CIP currently has 90,000 annually that's going toward our roof replacements and then the 180,000 annually from HVAC. I'll just point out to the board, it was just a few years ago, we had no dollars in recurring going towards that. And so again, the board made a significant step in this year's capital improvement funding to add to that. I think the point of this slide is there's more work to be done, but we have started down that path just like we are with replacements for turnout gear and public safety and things of that nature. Because we know they are recurring, the roofs and HVACs are not going to go away. And so building that into our capital budget is very important.
Yes, and the reason why the 90,000 dollars seems so low compared to what we're going to need, we didn't have the assessments back when that number was worked into the capital improvement plan. Now that we've, we've got up on the roofs and we've really seen what the damage is and when it needs to be fixed, that's why we're seeing such a drastic jump in that one. We'd already done an assessment of most of our HVAC units, so it's much more accurate in the, like the zero to five-year range. Next, touching on the facilities master plan and the space needs analysis, this was completed by Spectrum Design in November 2023. Some of you are much more familiar with it than others. The facilities that were included in that study were the courthouse, the sheriff's office, E911 Center, Public Safety and Emergency Operations Center, the animal shelter, Department of Social Services and our libraries. And truly, the purpose of that study was to create a long-term plan to meet the county's facility growth needs. It wasn't a plan that really analyzed like a facility condition assessment, it wasn't looking at the physical condition of these buildings. It was looking at how our staff interacts in these facilities and future staff growth and how we could accommodate that. So the immediate needs that were identified were the relocation of public safety to the Franklin Center and the relocation of the EOC to the government center. So thank you to carryover money, we have been able to complete both of those projects. The next priority was a new E911 dispatch center and we were given kind of three options on that. We could look at relocating dispatch to the social services building at a cost of about 3 million. We could construction, construct in addition to the Gooood building at about 3.8 million. Or we could purchase new property, whether there's a building on it or not, and we can construct a new facility. That price is really going to be to be determined until we know what type of land or building would be purchased. Kind of tied into that would be an office for social services. They're maxed out in their facility right now. So we're either going to need to do an addition to that facility eventually to accommodate their staffing needs, or if we chose to move dispatch in there, we're going to have to relocate their office to a new facility. So if we jumped in on option two and did the addition to the Gooood building, the office for social services may be able to move from immediate need maybe to a short-term need. It wouldn't be something we'd have to do as quickly. Additional immediate needs that were not identified in the plan, a storage facility or a warehouse, we're really maxed out on storage everywhere. The sheriff's office, public safety, voter registrar, all of them are in need of, of like much more up-to-date and secure storage, especially the voter registrar. Also, a potential maintenance facility for county vehicles or apparatus is something that's been brought up by several departments. Whether it's a shared facility between departments or how we would like to handle that, really haven't thought about it too much, but it's definitely a need that we have. So something to think about as we do capital planning. And I did just want to note, the facility estimates on here do not include any type of land purchase. So if we're buying property or land to build on, it is not included in these numbers. So short-term needs, that's going to be here within five years, various renovations at the courthouse for about a million dollars. Those renovations are more going to be how can we more efficiently use the courthouse space? Since they are really tight on space right now, how can we use it better to make them more comfortable and make it more comfortable for the public to transact any type of business in the facility? Medium-term needs, so five to 10 years, I will look at the construction of a public safety or sheriff's office at a satellite facility, construction of a library satellite facility and Gooood building renovations. So public safety sheriff's office, about 4.6 million. Library satellite facility at about four and the Gooood building renovations around 3 million. Long-term needs, and I do stress this is long-term, 15 to 20 years, we're going to have to do something about the courthouse. There's an option to create a new J and D complex, whether that's on the courthouse facility or nearby, kind of to be determined, about seven and a half million. We could renovate the courthouse after J and D vacates their space so that we can reallocate space for different apartments. Could be around 23 million. And option two would be the, the full courthouse replacement and that's going to be 24 million. These project costs are based off of 2023 numbers. They do have an anticipated annual escalation included. Again, that's kind of a shot in the dark. Just to recap this, because it does get asked a lot, existing lease information, the Westlake facility for public safety, that lease ends September 30th, 2025. It does automatic one-year renewals if, if we don't give them a 90-day notice, so it could keep going after that. The current rate is just under 2,700 dollars a month or 32,000 annually. And that's for the office space. For the garage space, same end of lease term, the rate currently is just under 1,400 dollars a month or 16,500 dollars annually. Westlake Sheriff's Office, that lease expires May 31st, 2027. We're looking at just under 2,000 dollars monthly or 23,500 dollars annually. And finally, we have the Westlake Library Facility and that ends in December 31st, 2025. That's a 10,200 dollar monthly lease or 122,000 annually.
Mr. Chairman?
Brandy, we can, what can we do to end those automatic renewals? I spoke to you about that one a while back. We, I don't think anything should automatically renew for three years without it coming to us.
There's some, like I said last time, some will only renew for a year and that's a little bit easier, but there are some that, that will renew for three or five years and it's going to be something that we negotiate with the landowners or the property owners when we create a new lease.
Well, so this one right here for the sheriff's office renewed for three years. And I think that's a conversation we need to have. I don't think anything should renew like that. Is that just me?
I agree 100%. I think anything for renewal on a lease, that it shouldn't be automatic, it needs to come before us for approval. And I, I, I don't like these automatic renewals either, but that's something that we'll need to work on in the future.
Especially three years, that's, that's too much.
Well, as they do come to term, we could very easily bring you either revised leases on that, that we can look at the terms of those or eventually get out of the leases altogether and eliminate the lease payments.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if, if that's a consensus there that it needs to come back to the board, I think we want to make sure that when that comes back to the board, that gives staff adequate time. So for us to make sure that we put on our tickler, if you will, if, if it's, you know, 90 days out, that's three months, then maybe we really need to have the discussion more at six months out as opposed to, you know, really waiting to that 90 days.
I agree. What's your thought on, on this side?
Yeah.
Okay, I see a lot of heads nodding.
And we, we can do that, we'll program that in and make, make a note of that to make sure.
Absolutely.
Can I add something, Mr. Postier? Brandy, when we do have these conversations for whatever leases we're dealing with, it would be helpful for us to know at that time what the marketable rates are in those given areas.
Okay, I could definitely work with that.
It'll give us some, you know, instructive information if we're way off or what have you. Thank you.
Jumping into the facility condition assessment that we had done for the jail, this is another one that we haven't really touched on a lot in the past. This was completed last year and identified a total cost for repairs needed of over four million dollars. It is an old facility. The priority level one, things that were to be accomplished within a year, we're looking at around six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That'll actually probably hit more towards seven hundred thousand dollars as we do some of these projects. We're going to have to repaint the jail and the courthouse eventually. It's something we get complaints about from the judge and the sheriff as well, and I'll agree with them, it's a very prominent building, we need to make sure it looks pristine. Two of the projects are already underway, thanks to Carryover Money that you guys dedicated to some of these projects. So we are doing a high-security exterior door replacement that kicked off a couple weeks ago, along with an intercom system replacement. The priority two, within two-years projects, are just over one point five million, and that does include a roof replacement. The jail was not included in the roof assessment, so that, the money that would be associated that is not included in that jail assessment, or roof assessment, I'm sorry. Priority three, just under two million dollars, that's some more significant HVAC work and renovations to the restrooms, mainly because the, the sinks and the toilets and stuff like that and the inmate cells, they're awful. And if you think just regular stuff is expensive, if you have to buy it for something like a jail facility, it like triples the price. Nothing is cheap. So, for jail replacement and repairs, again, the total for that was just over four million. Our approved five-year CIP has a hundred thousand dollars annually right now, or five hundred thousand dollars total. And to fully fund the repair and replacement plan over the suggested five years, and I do say suggested, because we could extend that out some if we need to, budget-wise, we need to increase to approximately eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually. I will say that the sheriff's office has been great about applying for grants with the Department of Corrections. The two ongoing projects we have right now, they applied for a grant, and we're having twenty-five percent of the cost for those repairs paid for. So Lieutenant Pig and Captain Amos, kudos to them, they did all the work, so. Some items to note about the local jail, the sheriff's office typically houses around fifty, well, forty-five to fifty inmates at our local facility. They've definitely made a concerted effort recently to make sure that we're maximizing that number in order to try and lower the cost at the regional jail. One way that they have been able to do that is, we used to have an inmate population that included both males and females. We have changed to a male-only population so that we're not housing one or two females and taking up an entire dorm. I did work with Franklin County Public Schools on their CIP. Disclaimer, I'm not pitching their capital improvement plan, I'm not prioritizing anything for them. They provided a document, I'm reporting the, the larger expenditures that we're seeing in both the five-year and the ten-year period. So the five-year subtotal in their CIP currently is just under ninety-three million. You'll see the improvements, I have them listed kind of by physical year, so Callaway Elementary was listed, I believe, for next year, and it'll kind of work your way down through the next five years. Obviously, the big driver on this number is the seventy-two million dollars for the CTE building, which they included in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. But then there's a variety of other repairs, most of these are going to be your roof repairs, your HVAC, your boilers, expensive items. One thing they really did stress is that, the number for those buses. We're currently funding three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year right now for school buses. That used to buy at least three buses for them, well, the price has gone up to anywhere between one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the money we're allocating right now buys them two buses. They are in need of thirty to forty right now. So, as we move into the budget season, I think you'll probably see them requesting a number that would fund anywhere from between eight and ten buses, so that's going to be a request of around one point two to one point five million dollars for buses alone. As was noted earlier by Chris, we did try to put in at least five hundred thousand dollars in this year's CIP to assist with some of the needs that we were seeing for new buses. Unfortunately, we did have to remove that from the budget when the tax rate was set. Looking into their ten-year total, it ends up being just over a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. What's really driving that cost after the five years are going to be your roof replacements, your HVAC replacements, and again, bus replacements. Looking specifically at the Career and Technical Education Center, this is just kind of a recap of, of where we've been, preliminary designs were presented in September twenty-twenty-three, and that was based off of, like, a design for the facility to be located on the existing high school campus. The estimated cost of construction and the project cost for that was roughly seventy-two million dollars, but it assumed a bid date of July twenty-twenty-four with a completion in January twenty-twenty-six. If I remember correctly, the architect had mentioned probably about a six percent escalation every year, so I think we'll probably be looking at at least a twelve percent increase off of that right now, based on the numbers they provided in September. The next step, or I'm sorry, a joint meeting between the board and the school board was held in January twenty-twenty-four. I think everybody agrees that this is still considered a high priority, but the next step's really going to be to confirm the location of the CTE facility, is it going to stay at the high school, or are we going to look at an alternative location? And to authorize the architect to take the design to the next level of completion, which is going to be your sixty-five percent plans. Now, I just wanted to very quickly touch on the two elementary schools that recently closed. Just so everybody's aware of, of where everything is, the school system is still in possession of these schools, they're working on cleaning them out, kind of reallocating some of the things that are in those schools, so we don't have any access to them right now. We will have them for the November elections, so there's no worry that we will not be able to vote at the facilities. The preliminary plan was for them, after the election, to winterize the schools, cut the utilities, and transfer them over to the county. Whether or not that timing is still on schedule, it's a little bit up in the air. But from their space and utilization study that they had done in twenty-twenty-three, the outstanding capital needs for burnt chimney was five point one-two-five million. And just for reference, if we were to take these facilities over, it has annual energy usage of about ninety-six thousand dollars. Henry Elementary, again, you can see the improvements that were identified there, just under one point eight million, with a similar annual energy usage of about ninety-six million, or ninety-six thousand, sorry. I will say those projects are not immediate projects. If we were to take these schools, we don't automatically have to put seven million dollars into them. These are just projected improvements or capital needs that they had identified in that study. Other considerations for both of these, if we do take them over, we're going to have to figure out building maintenance, ground maintenance, security, staffing, and third-party monitoring for the water at Henry, since it's on a well. Also looking at future usage of the buildings as either county facilities, outside-agency facilities, or possibly a private entity may be interested in buying them. So, yes.
Do you know how much land is associated with those two schools, approximately?
I looked it up, and I thought one was like thirty or forty, and one was twenty. So, I mean, there's some good acreage on both of them.
Which one had the most, do you know, Henry probably?
I believe, I'll have to pull the study, I have the study over there, so I'll pull it before the meeting's over.
I was just curious.
Oh, no problem. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Steve, so that he can jump into some public safety capital overview.
All right, well, I'm just going to kind of transition here a little bit after all that depressing news. It's a lot of numbers to, to, to kind of remember, you know, and again, as Chris said earlier, you know, just kind of the big, the big picture and these large capital needs that, that are out there. And shifting over to public safety, and I've got the guys in the back there that'll, that'll come up and, and help us more on really the focus of today for the public safety is the ambulance rotation and ambulance replacement plan. But I just wanted to kind of hit, hit on a couple of other things real quickly. Brandy had mentioned the office relocation and EOC relocation, you know, that is, I want to say, ninety-nine to a hundred percent complete. And just want to send thanks out to, you know, that was a multi-department effort, Brandy's office, Duane's office with IT, and of course, public safety, really all, you know, all hands on deck when trying to make that transition, especially with the EOC, you know, the EOC is something that should be ready and should be, you know, at a moment's call, and as we're going through this move, here comes a tropical storm, Debbie, you know, just as we're, we're transitioning from the EOC. So, a lot of moving parts there, there was a lot of scheduling, a lot of timelines that had to be consolidated and, and worked together, and, you know, thankfully, that all worked out with, with good work from all our folks in those various departments. Did want to point out, relative to public safety, if you recall, last year, we had a lot of focus on the radio system, that, that was a real intentional focus of the, the CIP, and we were at, really actually able to go ahead and really program that out over a ten-year period. Now, our kind of adopted plan is really five years, but we, we really did set a ten-year capital plan, and we've looked at that again, and we feel like that is still appropriate and still going to get us where we need to get to on the radio side, as well as the, kind of the, the hardware, the infrastructure needs, so it's really two different parts there. But if you recall, it's about two and a half million dollars, you know, over that ten-year period that we're, we're allocating and, and working through that. And so, much thanks to Jeff Echernot in the back of the room, he's worked really hard to, to make this a very fiscally responsible kind of replacement schedule and, and updating of the radio system. But again, lots of pieces to that, nine hundred and some radios, just that have to be programmed, have to be replaced. You think, we, me personally, have two or three cellphones in the house, it's a big deal just to replace one of those and, and upgrades. We're talking about nine hundred radios and then a lot of towers around the county. With that, I do just want to, you know, again, shout out to Jeff. Part of, if you recall, earlier this year, we, we did get some grant funding, and we were able to replace the microwave systems on all the towers that we have for the radio system. Again, big project, lot of moving parts there, a lot of coordination that, that had to happen, and I'll say it was seamless, maybe, maybe one or two hiccups, but I think it was pretty much a seamless transition with all the agencies and, and everything that had to happen there. So, again, kudos to Jeff and the folks he had working on that. And with that, we are currently working to add the school system to the radio system. So, ten years ago, this system started, the system was designed to have the school system on it at that time, so the school buses. Over the last several years, their system has really kind of degraded and really, there was a storm who knocked, that knocked one of the towers out on Grassy Hill, there's been a, a lot of things there, their radios were also reaching end of life, and so we've been migrating, Jeff's been working with them to, to really migrate them over to our system as well. One thing that, that we will be coming to you about is some of the maintenance funds that they have budgeted with a third party to keep up the old radio system. We, we really want to see that just transferred over. So, Jeff and his shop, as they're maintaining the police radios, the, all the public safety radios, they'll also, the, the school bus ones will fall under that as well, and so the maintenance that they were paying a third party would really just be transferred to the county to maintain those systems moving forward. All the infrastructure is the same infrastructure, so it's, there's no additional infrastructure cost, it's really just the additional radios and keeping those updated. So, again, just point out to, you know, we, we're trying hard to, Brandy had mentioned grant funding for some of these capital projects. We've tried really hard over the last several years to also get grant funding for some of these capital needs on the public safety side. The generator project, which you may remember, we kind of coordinated that with the school system as the middle school project is being, going on and being upgraded. We got grant funding for the switches that were necessary for the generator to be hooked up to the, to the school, which also serves as a shelter, emergency shelter, and then we were successful in getting a congressional appropriation of about seven hundred thousand dollars to, to actually get the generator to go on that site as well. So that's, that's been an ongoing grant project. As I mentioned earlier, the microwave upgrades, that was a project where we were also looking at a, a new tower in the Boones Mill area, because we have a kind of a coverage gap in the Boones Mill, right in the town of Boones Mill. And so, together, that was around a billion dollars or so of, of funding we got from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We're also anticipating another congressional appropriation of around three hundred thousand. My understanding is that's kind of working its way through the House, and, and so hopefully that continues to, to work its way through. And so, between the YMCA project, the generator project, and the radios, we've, we've seen some success with some of those appropriations, which is, helps a lot, helps a lot with this, this funding. And so, and then just the other day, we, we talked to you about another successful opportunity with the Assistance of Firefighters Grant, where we're looking to, as Chris mentioned earlier, kind of cyclical, kind of working to replace turnout gear, that is a, is a big expense. I know Mr. Tatum mentioned that the other day, I think we're right around five thousand dollars a set, you know, for, for this turnout gear. And so, when you look across the entire agency, that's, that's a, a large number of, of gear that needs to be replaced, and we kind of want to have a systematic approach to, to replacing those. And so, wanted to point that out, that, you know, there's been, while there are still a lot of needs, there's been some successes on, on getting some of this grant funding. And again, kudos to, to the public safety staff who's worked hard on those, Josh Turner, who's, who's not here, I don't see him, but he's worked hard on these as well, and, and on the emergency, emergency management side to keep these up, as well as the recent storm event, Josh was very busy during that time, and so we've had a lot of people working on a lot of these things kind of behind the scenes. And so, it's good, it's good to see, it's not for nothing, you know, that we're seeing some, some positive benefits from, from some of those efforts. But as I said earlier, the focus really is, is to look at the ambulance rotation and replacement plan. I think if, before they get into it, I'll just say, I think what we'll really see is that, yes, as Chris mentioned, we've made a conscious effort to put more funds there, but again, I think what we're seeing, and we're seeing that in several areas, is there's, there's more that's needed in a lot of these areas to, to keep up and, and to keep these facilities going, and it's, it's probably a couple of reasons. One is just the inflationary factors, you know, two is, is just some of the, those other increasing costs and, and needs that come up with each of these. So, I'll let Chief Fowler come up, and I think Jeff is also available to, to kind of help, but they've been working, the team's been working really hard to, to look at the existing fleet, so we're really just talking about ambulances here, the EMS side of things, to look at the condition of the current fleet and what that kind of looks like on a, both a rotational schedule, but also a replacement schedule of, of how we can get there. And so, I know he'll mention it, but, you know, recently, you guys had approved the purchase of two additional units. Now, again, we won't see those units for probably about a year before we actually get those in-house, but those, those are in the works and progressing, and so they'll talk about kind of what the strategy is moving forward, so.
Steve?
Chris?
Question.
Yes, sir.
We had talked earlier about the generator project. Is it still going to be handled outside of existing contract? You know, in other words, not as a change order to the existing contract, the county's still going to carry that project?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Tim?
Go ahead.
So we kind of transitioned from the capital discussion into the ambulance, and I, I was saving my questions till the end of the capital one, so it feels like I should ask those now rather than waiting till the end, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So a couple, so we're, we're so underfunded on the capital plan in terms of replacement costs, and this is, either Chris or Brandy, it's kind of directed to both of you, so either one could answer, but one, one question, so when things break and they're, they can't be repaired, what are you doing? Because there's so much, there's only so much robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you might do that once early in the year, but after that, what do you do when, when something can't be, it has to be replaced? What are you doing on an ongoing basis?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Quinn, and I think Brandy could, could chime in in, in terms of what we've had to do recently, because some, some HVACs have been in disrepair, there's unexpected disrepairs, if you will. We've been fortunate that we've been able to find money with the, in the existing budget and some of our capital contingencies. As an example, we have a capital reserve of about seven hundred and fifty thousand. As an example, we have a capital reserve of about seven hundred fifty thousand currently budgeted. We have a budget stabilization reserve of another million. So we do have reserves when those things happen. However, that's not necessarily the best practice a- a- as you would imagine. Other times, of course, grant opportunities, hazard mitigation grants and so forth that we can get for emergencies per se, you know, that, that's, that's kind of the whole, I guess, basis of, of some of the discussion today. Again, putting more, knowing that these H V A Cs roofs, buses specifically for schools, we know we need more recurring dollars going to that because at some point, if you have too many of these failures, you no longer have reserves. And so that's.
I know, and that's, it's kind of a tiny reserve that seems like it would run out after one failure. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Second question, so I recently, in my own house, one of the zones failed for the H V C and I got two bids from a prominent local H V A C companies. One was just under seven thousand and one was twenty-one thousand. So a three, a three hundred percent difference in price. And then I think back to some of the situations we've had where you're only getting one bid, right? And it, and it kind of makes me nervous when I see one bid. And now I see, wow, if the, you get one bid and it comes from this company that's three hundred times, or three, three hundred percent more, you know, I, it just, it's hard because you're going to end up way overspending for some of the work. And so I just wonder, so I'm kind of putting together earlier year experience with you can't find bidders and it was V dot and then it's another county. It's all over the place with my recent experience where I could have had to pay three times the price. And so what are you doing to try to make, you have good bidders on projects like that?
Good question, Mr. Quinn. On some of the previous ones earlier in the year, some of those were more consultant-based in terms of whether it's auditing, whether there's a small amount of folks, professional services primarily in that space, if you will. I would say, you know, regarding our procurement guidelines, we're required, you know, to get three quotes and then above a certain amount, a projected amount, we're required to actually go out to bid, especially for hard infrastructure, whether it be H V A C roofs. So rest assured, you know, before those projects, you know, are approved, we, we, we are pretty aggressive at, at, at getting and putting those things out to bid and getting more of those quotes for the higher dollar items.
Okay, so I'll keep, I still, bear with me, I still have a few more. So, so Brandy showed us kind of good, better, best for the roof and there's a significant price difference. And then I think about, wow, we're so constrained on the capital fund. So when it, when it comes to making those decisions and you're, you're being strangled with capital money, are you typically making the good decision rather than buying the better or the best? What, how, how is, are, are you, do you have any ability to go to the best sometimes? Are you always stuck going to good right now?
It, it really, and I'll let Ms. Rosser probably answer that better than I can, but I think it really depends on the actual specs, you know, before you bid it out. If, she pointed out, you know, if it's the forty-year roof, if you will, you know, that's going to be the best. Do we, do we bid out and spec out a twenty-year roof? Perhaps, but it's going to depend on, you know, the specific project, so.
I would say typically depending on the funding that's available, I would prefer to go with the middle option. The high-end option is usually not feasible for us. So if we had to do it, we would do the good. I would typically prefer to do like a thirty-year over a twenty. So I would, I would stick with better. And as far as like multiple quotes on buildings, we do that every time that we can. We do run into some issues, especially with electrical and HVAC, with switching contractors at a facility. If I have a contractor come in and install train equipment and then I have another contractor that comes in that doesn't specialize in train, they have a very hard time maintaining that equipment. Or if I bring in one electrician and have them do all this wiring, next time I bring in another electrician, they don't like the way they wired it, so they want to go back and rewire everything I already had done. So it gets a little bit difficult and the cheaper the projects get, the harder it is to get the bids because people get very cranky when you ask them for a bid over and over again and you turn them down every time. Like we've had them tell us to stop calling them at some points.
Okay, just a couple more. So going back to that slide on Westlake, and you don't need to bring it up again, but our annual lease costs are two hundred thousand dollars a year and they're coming from four, from various needs, the library and sheriff and, and it just makes me wonder, are there any pieces of property in the Westlake area that we could possibly, well, either that we already own, that we were thinking about selling, that maybe we shouldn't sell, or that, that are available that we should consider buying and building, making a capital investment so that we could house some of these needs rather than continuing to pay the two hundred thousand dollars per year? Are you, do you look at that at all?
What I'd say, we've had, previous boards have had discussions in that area. Mr. Quinn, it, and it seems like every so many years, probably prior to COVID, may have been the last time, maybe there was a really concerted effort, if you will, for the board to really discuss that. Previously, there was some discussion in the area regarding the larger venue at the lake that really never necessarily materialized. I think a commercial entity took that space, which is good, it's on the tax rolls and so forth. During that time, there was some discussion, you know, there may be an opportunity to consolidate some of those other offices and uses into a facility if, if that use makes sense. There, there was some discussion, I remember years ago, of maybe it wasn't necessarily the, the, the best use of space if you have the ambulance going out on a call right beside, in the same facility as the library, if you will. But of course, you know, you can do things to mitigate that from construction standpoint, but yes, previous boards have had that discussion, Mr. Quinn, and it's certainly something that I, I think, you know, we should look at in, in, as we evaluate all of our leases and county properties. If, and certainly if that's the board's pleasure, we can take a deeper dive.
And when we did the facilities master plan, there are appendixes, or appendices, I guess, I don't know, that kind of identified properties that may be appropriate for, for these type of things. There are several properties there, some of which we own, some of which we would have to purchase, but we definitely have looked into potential facilities to eliminate these leases.
So moving on, regard, I was glad to see the C T come up, a couple of questions about that. One is, I know before my time, they looked at the Maju Craft building and the mayor vetoed that and now you have a new mayor and who, who knows if Maju Craft is interested or not, but I know Dr. Sears felt the space was very adequate for it. And, and the cost would be a fraction of what it would be to put it over by the high school and we all seem to be supportive of, of the C T. And it just makes me wonder, would it be worth asking the question, like simple to Maju Craft, just say, hey, is this even available? And they, they might say, yes, it is, or no, we've already decided, it's just like a simple question. It's not, I'm not begging you or trying, it's just, is it available or not? And then if, if that answer was yes, you could ask the mayor, would he consider it or not? And at least we would know it's either an option or not an option. And then coupled with that, I wondered, we, you talked about the next step, but would it be worth getting the school back in to talk about that and what we want to do? Because it's been quite a while since we talked to them about the location and the next step. And I remember they presented the budget for the next step, but it, it feels timely to take, to have them come in and talk about it again. So those are my two comments about the C T. And then two more things and then I'm done. So on the burnt chimney, I've received a lot of comments about how there's very high utilization of the gym, I think for, primarily for basketball and there are a lot of families that are very concerned, well, if you shut the school down, where are we going to play basketball? And so not looking for an answer now, but I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar, that a lot of people are, they, they love, I think it was basketball, they love the gym for basketball and they just, they want to be able to continue. Or if you don't do it there, where are you going to do it? So the whole basketball program issue is kind of an issue with burnt chimney. And then the last thing I had, I didn't see anything on with the green box conversion over to, you know, to compactor sites. And, and that's kind of been top of mind for a lot of us, we've seen pictures and all. And so is, does that mean you're, you have plenty of capital for that or it's already taken care of or is that another discussion? Or I was just curious about the green box to.
I, I would say both, yes. Budgeted for capital, Dan, and then also we, we did meet as a team and we knew we would only have a certain amount of time today to get through. So we, we were thinking about another specific session for the solid waste collection sites because I know that's been mentioned not only by several of you, but really many of you, maybe in September, October. But currently, we do have a budget, we do have a line item budget for, to complete about three additional collection sites, three to four. But depending ever how many additional sites that we may look at, it may require additional capital funding. So we do want to get back before the board in the coming months and refresh the board on that original plan. Because originally, we were looking at reducing our sites from sixty-five to twelve. And so we're still on that path to twelve, but I know there's been some discussion, well, we may need to add some more. And so we, we, we definitely probably need to review that, review that schedule. But we do have funds budgeted for the three additional that, that Mr. Mr. Galton is working through.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick question?
Okay, quick, I want to get them up. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, under the public safety piece, are we going to have reflected in there the capital needs that have been expressed by Scruggs? Is that part of this today?
It, it's not part of today's discussion. I think that may be something we talk about potentially with carryover and/or the upcoming budget for capital needs. So today, really, public safety, yeah, there's, just like the, the public works, we left out several things because we were really focusing on the ambulance piece today. But I think there, there may be some discussion with that when it comes to carryover next month as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, you guys. I want to start, Supervisor Quinn, you actually kind of changed my start here with your questions, so I'm going to answer your questions upfront. You kind of asked a question on capital. What do we do when something breaks down and it's not repairable? And that's the whole point of why I'm standing before you guys today, is we've hit, we're starting to hit some of that point, especially with our EMS services and our ambulances here in the county. Just last month, we had one medic unit that has broke down and has become unreparable. That leaves us with a limited amount of reserves and we want to start getting into the replacement program and our capital needs so that we don't hit that point of, we have nothing. That's not an acceptable answer when it comes to firing EMS within this county. Again, to, to quote Chris over here, he said, "Too many failures and there's no more reserves." We're trying to avoid and mitigate that. So what are we looking at when it comes to this? Currently, when I stepped into this position, it was an interesting state of the fleet. And as you kind of look right here, we've got this new arrival of two medic units coming next year, so we kind of started off with what happens next year. Well, immediately, when those two new medic unit comes in, I'm still, as you see in the red, everything that's on the red in front of you, I'm still one medic unit, what we call in the red, which means at a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, our, our goal is to move those ambulances into a reserve status. I know it's very difficult to think, we say, you know, some vehicles, they make high mileage, good maintenance, good care, things like that. Remember, these are emergency vehicles. These vehicles are entrusted with saving lives and they're hard, they're hard-driven miles. So our goal is to allow them to stay in reserve status for as long as we can, as we work through replacements. In addition to that, we have one that's approaching the red, meaning a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Again, under our current rotation plan, we like to move them to reserve status at a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. Followed up with five more at about halfway, halfway to three quarters of that replacement mark and you'll see, again, when we start next year with those two new medic units, we'll only have three medic units that have some longevity. So what we've done here in front of you is, if I don't do anything and we just kind of continue on the path, that's what you're looking at. So if we get those two new medic units and then we look at the current projections of what we have and what's been allocated in the capital, what we're looking is basically, we got to skip a year, let some of the capital reserves build back up and then get a new one, basic, on base projections, we'll be able to afford about one per year moving forward. So as you can kind of see, even, you know, even though we went eight years a little further than most asks of the five, eventually we hit a point that we don't have a replacement. We run out. So definitely, definitely has been very appreciative with my staff that you guys have allowed us to get these, these two ambulances on order. We've got a wonderful program that we have gotten with Penn Care to get those earlier than the three-year typical allotment time. So the fact that we can get them in twenty, I'm sorry, twelve months is kind of an amazing thing. So where are we at right now? Just so you guys know, we are operating seven career ambulances frontline with four volunteer ambulances currently operating in a mixed frontline capacity. So what we're doing is, again, showing you, we currently have three of them as we stand today that are over that hundred thousand. In fact, by the year's end, they'll be over that hundred and twenty-five thousand replacement, five medics that are quickly approaching and three that we're doing pretty good with. As you can see, every day, we're, doesn't matter which medic unit, we're driving somewhere between thirty-three and a hundred miles a day. So those miles in some of these places add up very quickly to the tune of, in, in a couple of our places, up to forty thousand miles a year. The volunteers that are running, they're running between fifty and twenty. Again, we're still putting some significant mileage on a few of these, these ambulances coming from the rescue squads. We were at five reserve ambulances, we're down to the four. And when we say reserve pieces, one of the four volunteer operated ones, we, we've now breathed a little bit of life back into squad two, which is amazing to watch volunteerism come back up in the county. So we've been able to get them, one of the reserve medic units to be used. We're trying to hold one for special events. As you guys know, we're into football season with the high school, middle school games and F A R M, we've committed to make sure that we have an ambulance on site if we can. So with four reserves, one being used and now one being committed to those standbys, rarely we have two. Every single one of our reserve units that are being used are over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Again, we, we try to move the threshold, keep the ones that with the lower mileage running at the frontline, those higher miles that we can still get some use out of for things like this, wear and tear, or when something needs to go to the shop. So what are we kind of looking for? What am I, what am I looking to, to gain out of this with you as we look into the capital? Well, what we're looking at is, we need to develop a, a twofold plan. That plan would be to ask the board to change the capital into looking towards the allocation of two ambulances per year for the next five years. We'll reevaluate annually to see if, are we keeping up? And at a point, have we caught up and can we reduce down to those one? Remember, our projected growth in call volume is going to do nothing but increase as well. And again, going back to those, those previous slides, if we do nothing but one a year, we're going to run out of reserves quickly. I want to try to also keep it as responsible as I can. And so you can see, when I talk about removing the significant impacts to our current fleet, one of the things that we're doing right now is, when I take an ambulance and we order it and we say, here's a brand new ambulance and I have to pick where I put it, if I say, I'm going to put that at station two, historically, that's where it stayed for its, its entire life. Well, the problem is, is I've got a couple of stations that run about five thousand miles a year. I've got a great problem that I have a ten-year-old ambulance sitting in a, in a rescue squad right now with about forty thousand miles on it, so very low miles for its time. But I also have a less than four-year-old ambulance with a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. None of my previous predecessors has taken the foresight to say that maybe we should start rotating those ambulances and be, be a little bit more responsible. So we are looking to ask the board to understand that there's going to be, we, we have a need now and going forward to rotate our current fleet. I need to look at what we have and I need to say, these are low mileage ambulances. If I move them to a high mileage station, I still have a usable extended life medic that I can put and use around, but I can stretch the miles that we have. That way, I'm not standing before you and I'm not saying, this year I need five and expressing I have no reserves and if you don't get me five, I don't want to ever do that to you guys. I made you a promise that I would be responsible when I came into this and I would build a plan. So this is that second part of that plan that I, that I came to you with last month was saying, we want to go ahead and start putting in a rotational plan, moving the ambulances as we see fit every one to two years. It wouldn't be a six month, but every one to two years, we would reevaluate where our mileage is at and we would start moving those medic units from station to station in order to extend the life of the fleet. As you can see, really, what, what is the bottom line here? The bottom line is if we don't, we're going to run out. So rotations of ambulances. So rotations of ambulances will reduce that accelerated mileage from what some of those stations do and that will help correct our current state until we can work through the replacement in the future. Because again, our hands are always going to be tied with capital. So if we can make the best out of responsibility, that's our goal.
Chief Fowler, one quick question. You mentioned volunteer squads. We currently have four in the county that are active. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Out of those that we say active, I know Red Valley's pretty, pretty active, still. Scruggs still fairly active. And is Rocky Mount counted as one of those? Are they getting back into pretty active? Callaway, when was the last time they, their volunteers responded to a call?
Callaway hasn't responded with an ambulance since September of last year. So as it, as it currently stands, I have had a meeting with Callaway's rescue squad in in trying to work with bolstering their numbers and seeing what we can do. If you guys don't know, the county has been gracious enough with Steve's support and Brian's support. We've actually sponsored an EMTB class and that's what's breathing life back into Squad Two. Currently, they have sixteen members, twelve of which are Squad Two members. The four others belong to either Red Valley or Scruggs. Unfortunately, none of the other rescue squads have chosen to put, put their members in. We have dedicated somebody to help bolster and and get out and get information out there for applications and volunteer applications. So again, what I can speak is, is yes, Red Valley is very, very active. They actually run two ambulances out of theirs and typically they'll they'll be staffed at least one of those a day. And in high volumes, they they do tend to get both of them out or at least one out and one on our standby coverage when we need help. Scruggs is another one that does pretty well to be active with their ambulances on most of their days. They're marked up at least fifty percent of the, well, not fifty percent every day, of twenty-four hour day.
And the reason I'm asking, I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of these numbers. You said Callaway volunteers haven't run a call out of their building since last September of last year. Who's responding to those calls?
Let me just, want to make sure though, it's just the rescue squad because their fire department. So right now, that that falls between our medic that we have in Faram or the medic we have in Boones Mill. So either either Medic Three will come from Faram or Medic Seven from Boones Mill will come over and then followed up by Medic Two. And should those three medics, then we start to expand out. So Medic Two's Rocky Mount and then we we have at times had Fork Mountain, medic that we have out there, come in, Glade Hill. And there have been days we've been so busy that Westlake's ambulance has come down and responded into the the Callaway area.
That just seems like a long haul to me. Do we have resources available that, I mean, have we looked into the possibility of even a QRV out there or maybe a paid squad out there?
So they do have a QRV. At this point, I haven't seen, and Jeff, can you answer that? Has there been a response with the QRV since September?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. Callaway was fortunate to use funds to recently purchase a new QRV. In the past year that Chief Fowler quoted, they have had between five and fifteen responses by QRV. It's also worth acknowledging that some of the volunteers do respond in their personal vehicle to things like a lift assist. But regretfully, we haven't seen utilization independently of their ambulance, which has been, of course, the core focus of this presentation. We also, I don't think, have looked concretely at how we might supplement them with staffing or something else. But but to the point of your question, QRV, yes. Some volunteer activity, yes. But those activities still require an external entity like Faram, Rocky Mount, Boones Mill, et cetera, to then enter the Callaway area to provide that definitive support for transport.
All right, thank you. I won't take up any more time. Go ahead.
That's okay. So again, just just want to leave you guys with, what are we proposing though? And hopefully, Supervisor Tate, and we can breathe some life. You know, again, we're trying to do our best to help bolster them and work with them and breathe life into that. But but until then, in particular, that that is an ambulance that has, it's four years old, has five thousand miles on the ambulance. They were gracious enough. We actually ran out of of ambulances about two weeks ago. When I say that, I had seven medic units in the shop. Some were a maintenance, typical maintenance. Some were, ended up being warranty issues that we needed to immediately take the ambulance out of service because of a dire warranty problem. And so they did recognize that 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 wasn't a ambulance that we could use. And we used that for approximately three weeks. And then made sure that we returned that that medic unit to them fully stocked and and ready to go. But in addition, the point being is I have a medic unit with five thousand miles on it and I have one that runs every single day that puts about forty thousand miles on it a year and is at a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And I don't know if that medic unit will make it till these next ones come in if I don't start rotating. So again, really what we want to say is, is due to the growth rate currently in mileage, because that's going to continue to go up. Our call volume is going to continue to increase annually. Those miles will continue to increase annually. Capitally, what we're, what we're looking at with this is, is asking the board to consider changing our capital from the allocation of one ambulance a year to two. We've already given a projected growth through the current company that we have with what a five-year projected growth will be. And the reason why we want to continue to stick with that company for two parts. Again, they have a warranty center right here in Franklin County, which makes things very useful and helpful for us on turnaround times. And two, if we can enter into an agreement with this company for the next five years, we're guaranteed two medics a year instead of having to put it on waitlists, as you guys have noted probably in the past with fire apparatus and EMS. We're getting to that point. There are three- to five-year build times. So being able to enter into a contract early guarantees us those medics and those medic replacements. Nothing that we order is due until we receive them, so just like the two that we ordered last month, we won't be paying on those until next year. But the two-part benefit for that is not only guaranteed, but we're able to lock in the price of what we call the box. The chassis itself will change in price. They don't have the control over that. Chassis will come from the, from the auto manufacturer. So we anticipate about a seven percent growth per year on chassis costs over the next five years. And that's just based on the historic, historical five-year that we've seen both on fire and EMS apparatus. All right. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Randy.
So I'd like, Jim, could I make a couple of comments? As I look at your proposal here, it really has two dimensions to it. One is the rotation of the ambulances and the second is the replacement of the ambulances. And I'd like to comment on the rotation of the ambulances because I feel your job is to optimize the system. And the system's a combination of the people and the equipment that you have. And optimizing it is considering the public safety of the Franklin County residents, but also the economic impact of of how you operate the system. And it feels like rotating ambulances is part of that optimization from my perspective and that we should be giving you full authority to rotate those ambulances as you see fit. To opt, again, to optimize the system. And we should only be challenging your decision if it's so egregious that a majority of the vote, the board would agree, whatever you did is so bad that we have to vote against that decision. But otherwise, it feels like we should be giving you that autonomy to do what you need to do, which is your job to optimize the system for public safety.
Yeah, Supervisor Quinn, that's a, that's a good point. Yeah. So that's why we're doing a two-part with this is because I know historically my predecessors haven't, haven't decided to do the rotation. I know it's a hard pill to swallow because a lot of times we do. The volunteers are amazing in this, in this county and I won't discount anything with that. But we have to understand that at some point, part of being fiscally responsible and extending the lives here is ensuring that the apparatus that we're given is going to function. So my goal moving forward with this is to ensure that that every citizen, it doesn't matter if you live in Callaway or Snow Creek or up in Westlake and Glade Hill, you know, somebody's going to be able to respond in a medic unit that's not going to break down. The last thing you want to do is is be in the middle of an emergency and it breaks down. And we have had that happen recently that where we've had to bring in another medic or limp of medic along just to get through a call. And that's unacceptable. And then, so if I don't start rotating these, the, what's, like I said, the downfall of that is, is I won't ask for two a year. But next year, I'm going to stand before you and ask for five. Because I'll continue to run the wheels off ones while I still have ones that are ten and now they'll be twelve or thirteen years old and they'll still be aged. I mean, we might make twenty years on a medic in a couple of places without having to rotate them. But in the same, in the same breath, in that same twenty years, we'll have replaced an ambulance in one station five times. But if we rotate them around, we can extend that life. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Fowler. And I think we need to look much further. We keep talking about ambulances over and over and over. And we need to move some capital stuff around in the budget to make this happen. As far as I'm concerned, ambulance is more important than any of it. A fire truck, a police vehicle, trash trucks, whatever. I would rather see the ambulances, and I see them on the road. They are wide open all the time. And I, I, this should be top of line. And I feel bad that we we talk about these, all these other things. I'm not trying to pick on the dog park. But we went from talking about that to today, here we are hard up for an ambulance. That just seems so backwards to me. And this needs to be fixed.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
Just as a follow-up, I don't think it's our job to tell Chief Fowler how to do his job. I don't know why he's here asking us this. As far as I'm concerned, he was hired to manage this department and he needs to do what he thinks is best. But I thank you for your comments, Chief Fowler, and I wish you great luck moving forward.
Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Chief Fowler, have you discussed this with in Callaway?
I haven't, I haven't done the, an ambulance discussion.
I liked your presentation, don't get me wrong.
So, so, no, to answer directly, no, I haven't, I haven't had.
I'm gonna answer these people. They're gonna be calling me, so.
I haven't had a discussion on ambulance rotation with anybody outside of my staff. And the reason for that is, I am aware historically of, of there was an attempt to move an ambulance at one point. I don't think it was done under the right pretenses. You know, I don't think at any point we should ever have knee-jerk reactions. I think, again, taking the time to present the data and and go forward and show it's a two-part thing. You know, we all need to come together and and my job is not to pick on any one entity or anyone. If if I can get calls, you know, covered and and volunteerism up, that's, that's our job. We're working really hard and and working well. You know, Squad Two, I hope, I hope they can bolster and and echo that, that our offices have worked really hard with the volunteerism. I do understand the, the struggles that Callaway faces. It's, it has nothing to do with whether, I mean, even if their people were running sixty-five calls a year. That's, that's generally what Callaway generates. Snow Creek as well, you guys are about sixty-four to sixty-five calls a year. Whereas we're looking at Rocky Mount running over a thousand calls a year. So the, the, because the other point would be, I would, I would have to look at Supervisor Mitchell's district. His ambulance is one of those ones that is a lower mileage ambulance, about forty thousand miles on the ambulance that currently resides at Station Six. And moving that one and moving something with a hundred thousand miles out there, again, at five thousand miles a year on average, which is what say, what both of the the medic units in your two districts come out with. If you, if you see it, five thousand, now I can go another five years. If I move a medic with a hundred thousand miles out there, I can go five more years before I have to replace it. But if I put a brand-new medic at Station Fifteen in Westlake, forty thousand miles a year, in five years, I just took a brand-new medic and I'm replacing it in the same amount of time. So the goal, the goal for me is to make sure that we move them all around. And it wouldn't be that Callaway or or Snow Creek would never get a new medic. But at some point, once they're replaced, no medic will be over five years old that's running frontline. But right now, your medic is over ten years old out of there. They may have low miles, but it's got the whole, in fact, we started using it a little bit more when we needed to. And the hoses are cracked. It's a ten-year-old unit. Eventually, that maintenance goes and then I'm going down the road and I, I just blew a radiator hose. Low mileage vehicle, but things age over time. And so that's not being fiscally responsible either if we're, if we're not getting new units and continuing to rotate those. So it it affects not just Callaway. Like I said, in the interim, it would be Callaway, Snow Creek, Red Valley. Those three, Red Valley currently has two ambulances that are in the, under the fifty thousand mile mark. Part of our rotation plan is we, we have a larger rotation plan would be to leave one of their medics but then replace one with a higher mileage so that we can balance that out. So, and I, and I know that a lot of these places with, you know, they, they fought hard. Your district, for example, did work very hard to try to get an ambulance replacement. But that's also because, same as as what Supervisor Mitchell and the, and the folks at Snow Creek could say, well, our ambulance is ten years old, we need a new one. Or if they wait till the mileage, if they, if Callaway waited till the mileage for replacement, you guys wouldn't be slated to get one for over twenty years. It would take you over twenty years. If if they were running the call volume that would come out of that district, you don't want a twenty-year ambulance and I don't want your folks fighting for a new ambulance. I think equi, fair and equitable medic units across the way. And so the first part was, is to just show the board, one, I need two ambulances a year if I rotate. If I don't rotate, I'm gonna need more. Some will start to age, but I'll still need more. And so once, once I bring this need up with you guys, the next step, yes, ultimately, is is to have to bring that need and present that across the board with the rescue squad captains. I mean, Squad Two would a hundred percent be on board right now just because their medic unit, they're using one of the ones with over a hundred and fifty thousand miles as, as they're running calls out of Rocky Mount. So they're a high-volume college district and their, their medic unit currently has over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. And I, I, in this ambulance plan right now, two, we are anticipating the potential in the next five years is the need to assist Scruggs, even though Scruggs is doing well. And they, they have bought their medic unit, but at some point, you know, we also want to anticipate what happens if we have to start running calls into that district or help them with with medic replacement as well.
I agree with my colleagues. You run it and like you got a good plan, you got a good head on you. And I will say, I've talked to Callaway and some other units too at the fair. And everyone I've talked to likes your approach. You're straight with everybody. What you're telling, you back it up. I've heard that from Callaway too. So like I said, I, if this goes into place, I'd like to call to Callaway and sit down and talk, please, if you would.
Yep. We won't do anything before we sit down as a group, every, you know, and that's okay. And I appreciate that, Supervisor Jameson.
Chief Fowler, one thing that I don't know if you've looked at or not, but Henry Fire Department, and I don't know if any of the other fire departments do this, but we've been doing it for about twenty years. First responder from, by the fire department, EMS first responder with a QRV. I don't know if that's an option with any other fire departments in the county or not. But that's maybe give you some access to some more manpower, some more trained personnel, if it's a possibility.
So due to our, due to our shortcomings in staff at this point, we have implemented EMS One. EMS One is a response vehicle that runs when we can. So as it stands right now, if I have a call out in a day, I'm not just going to put one person sitting at a station. Historically, that was done before I got here. So we have added a response vehicle. Snow Creek has a secondary response vehicle that we do upstaff. So currently, we are running one to two response vehicles because our goal would be, again, I don't want to leave Snow Creek without service.
Are there any other fire departments in the county other than Henry that's running first response?
No.
I didn't know if there was any other interest or not, and that was something we started twenty years ago. Might, you know, it might be. Might, you know, it might be a worthy discussion with the fire chiefs and see if there's any interest out there. And if it is, it might give you an opportunity for some more-
Right. And, and I would say that, and I, I agree with, with you, that would be great. I do know I can speak for Callaway's district. They do have a couple of folks that are both Rescue Squad and fire members. And so that's an opportunity for them to get that response vehicle out as well.
All right. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I'm, I'm done. I was just questions for you guys.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Chief Fowler?
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, if I, I think I am hearing consensus with the board then in terms of this rotational schedule with our Public Safety Director. And of course, I know that's something new and has already been mentioned. I know there will be a lot of communication that's needed to fully explain that. But if I don't hear any objection, I, I do see a consensus here. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, Chris, and I know when this goes in, we'll all get phone calls from different people, but as long as it's fair and equitable and fiscally responsible across the county, I can't argue it. I, I think is, and the way I understand him telling it, it's, it sounds great to me.
And bottom line, it's not our job.
That's right. It's your job to run the ship.
He's in charge, I'm not.
Yep. And, and we, we'll have you back.
I appreciate that.
And, and also to add to that, I agree with Supervisor Mitchell, we need to put our ambulance replacement at the top of the list. And if it means tapping into fund balance, if we need to, to get called up, to get to where we need to be, we need to look at what's the value of possibility of saving someone's life out there. And, you know, that might be my parents, it may be my grandchildren, it might be me needing an ambulance. And the last thing I want is for it to blow a heater hose going down the road and they have to send one from Glade Hill to Henry to pick me up. You know, I want to have good, serviceable units out there. We owe that to our citizens.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a cou- couple of comments here. Thank you, Board, for the reaffirmation, if you will, of, of, of staff and so forth with, with our fleet and public safety. Secondly, and Mr. Tatum, you mentioned, Mr. Mitchell, you mentioned in terms of prioritization of our ambulance fleet in the county budget. Staff has met with our financial advisors, Davenport, Mr. Rose and so forth will be with us. Few localities, there's a couple in Virginia, I think there's a couple in the Midwest that are now looking at actually funding their fleet in a different way, not necessarily a lease purchase per se, but actually advancing some financing of their fleet replacement when it's a definitive known amount, whether it be buses, whether it be ambulances. And it gives more reassurance that the funds are there, that it's programmed in over a period of time. And so we'll be working with Mr. Rose to bring that model, if you will, for the board's consideration concerning the budget. But I wanted the board to know that. And then, and then thirdly, I just, you know, Mr. Tatum, you mentioned on Tuesday, some of the accolades and so forth in terms of the county staff in, in various programs. And I, I would say this, for Franklin County, the foresight, not only of this board and the continued foresight of this board, a lot of emphasis in the last few years have been put in fire and EMS. And, and we've added additional capacity for staffing 24/7 with our stations and so forth. I'm reminded of a county like Franklin County, which is, it's rural, it's, it's, it's developing in many ways, suburbanizing in some ways. But I'm reminded of how blessed we are compared to many localities and counties in Virginia that do not necessarily have a fully developed career and volunteer system. And so a lot of times, I think, you know, our citizens may not realize that, that there are a lot of localities or a lot of counties around that may not necessarily have readily available fire EMS, whether it be career or volunteer. And some other counties are just getting into that game. Montgomery County, Virginia, just hired their first paid career staff. And when people think of Montgomery County and Blacksburg and Christiansburg, you know, we started down this path 20 or 30 years ago in Franklin County. So I just, it's, it's a good reminder of the good foresight of previous boards, but certainly the current board.
Chris, can we take five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and finish up with our comprehensive-
For you guys to look at. And these are just, we've been very facility-heavy when we're talking about our capital projects. So we just wanted to mention some of the additional projects that are in the approved 2529 CIP. We do have the village improvements and housing utilities, 575,000. Job creation fund at three-quarters of a million. Three items for the landfill, the engineering compliance groundwater at 850,000. Leased equipment, 475,000. And the rebuild equipment, which is just under 2 million. Capital maintenance for Parks and Recreation, just over 1 million. We have a IT infrastructure refresh, which is 816,000. Looking at vehicle replacements for anything that's kind of like passenger vehicles, non-emergency response vehicles for various departments, half a million. And finally, vehicle replacement for the Sheriff's Office over the next five years was approved at $3 million. And with that, I think Chris is going to cover a couple of next steps.
Sure. Thank you, Brandy. Just real quickly, we'll, I'm sure we're going to have more discussion regarding our priorities and strategic plans and, and capital planning and so forth coming up on September 4th. By the way, incidentally, we have reserved the Founder's Room at Faram College. That will be the location on Wednesday, September 4th, beginning at 10:00. We'll get information out to you in the Friday packet. We'll send more information on that. Of course, Davenport is looking to be with us, I think it's the September 17th or 19th, one of those dates, one's the Tuesday, one's the Thursday. Well, I, I think it's the 17th, but we'll, we'll follow back up. It's one of those dates with Mr. Rose. And then, as I mentioned, he will not only look at some of these ambulance replacements that we mentioned, but then also, if you all recall when Mr. Rose was with us back in March, I believe, he walked the board through the possibility of some short-term borrowing of some of these immediate projects. As an example, if there's a 911 dispatch center and let's say the estimate is three or four, $5 million. If there is another project for the social services building in the $5 or $6 million range over the next five years, up to about $20 million before these large generational projects like the CTE. Certainly, CTE is part of that equation, but he can walk the board through some different thoughts of how to take care, if you will, of these immediate needs. I think the school system noted, they had a few as well. One was the Callaway, I believe Rocky Mount Elementary is, is well on their, on their list. Some buses, some other things. So, all that being said, we look forward to his time that will spend with Board. I think today, we just wanted to get all this out in front of the board, just to kind of review. And then we're going to follow back up further on the solid waste collection sites that Mr. Quinn, that you mentioned and others, at an upcoming work session as well in terms of the sequencing. So Brandy and staff, I know y'all put a lot of work and effort into this, this last week. And I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Brandy and-
Of course.
Brian and Steve for all their hard work. And Mr. Fowler and others.
Just to follow up on Mr. Carter's question, I did look up, Burnt Chimneys sits on about 10 acres and it's 49,000 square feet. Henry's on 23 acres, but it's only 30,000 square feet.
Thank you.
We'll just, we're just skipping it. Come on. Don't look, close your eyes, no spoilers. Okay. How is everybody? A quick update on comprehensive plan. The progress that we've made, what we're working on now, I was here about three months ago, I think to the day almost. And at that point, we had just gotten to the very end of, of the first round of public engagement, which was that online survey and those public workshops. So we've made a bit of progress in the drafting of the actual plan, so we're going to go over that just super quick. And more than that, I want to just run through the website that we built with you all so you know what's out there and available, and more importantly, you can share it with every human being on planet Earth that you know, so that they also look at it and get engaged with it. So just a quick recap of the process itself. 15 months at this point, with what has happened and what is a minimum time commitment to finish up, we're looking at 15 months. Phase one is complete. We've, we've put these into three easy buckets. Phase one was the first round of data collection and the first round of public engagement. Again, that was the online survey and the public workshops that we held in each election district, as well as county staff interviews. So we sat down with Parks and Rec, tourism, economic development, public safety, and just got their feedback on a lot of the things that you all hear month to month. Their needs, what their projections are, what their, their goals are for the next 10 to 20 years. We want to incorporate that into the plan as often as we can. Of course, high level, you hear the nitty-gritty when they come here in front of you, but we've added that in as, at the public engagement phase. A note on data collection, we do a lot of that at the front end, so we know kind of what we're working with, who's living here, where they're working, et cetera. But don't be fooled, that happens every single month as we're writing the chapter. So that's ongoing, but we do a lot of it at the front. Right now, we're in the middle of Phase Two, which is drafting the actual plan, so the chapters. We're taking it chapter by chapter. We are holding monthly work sessions with the Planning Commission to go over those. I think we've maybe missed one month, but we've, we've gone through seven so far. And I'll, in just the next slide, we'll go over the chapters that we've reviewed thus, thus far. Another key here at this phase is the website is live. We're always available, of course, via phone if someone has a question or if they want to come in. The work sessions are open to the public, but the website is really the community's ticket to know what's happening in real time as we're going through this. Because what often happens in this world, at that beginning phase, they come to the workshop, maybe they'll take the online survey and then they kind of like fade into the night and you don't hear from them again as you're drafting the plan or whatever initiative it is. So that is our attempt to keep that alive and well for them so they have an opportunity to share their feedback. And I'll show you what that looks like. Then, once we wrap up Phase Two, it will be Phase Three, which is more public engagement. We'll go back to the public, present the entire plan as a whole, get their feedback. We've scheduled in one open house. We can have two, we can have seven, it doesn't matter however many the board would like to have. Those are tentatively scheduled for January 2025, if we can stay on schedule. And then that would put the adoption hearings in February and March. So just, I've touched a little bit on this, but just to give you some specifics. So as of today, either, what I'm about to go over has either been completed or we're in progress. This is more or less in sequential order, give or take. Online survey was available for almost two months. We got 272 responses from that. I, I think I came to you all, maybe it was in May. It's a good number. It doesn't seem like a great number because we have 55,000 people here, but when it comes to public engagement in an aging community, when you don't have a lot of, of internet access, that's not a bad number. It's not unusual to see something like that. So it seems low compared to the folks that are living here, but pretty standard as far as public engagement goes. We've had a website up and running almost the entire time. We ha- we held the seven public workshops, one in each district. I have the participants listed here for you. We compiled those results into a summary document. It's about 140 pages. We go over a summarization of the key themes, things that kind of keep rising to the top. And then we also included more or less minutes or transcripts from all of the workshops, as well as the survey results themselves. You all got that via email today. I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but please do if you have any concerns, if you're wondering about something, you can call anytime. Again, staff interviews were conducted and then, of course, the Planning Commission work sessions are underway. Reminder, those are open to the public. Anyone can come and listen to them, as you all are aware. So far, we're just under halfway with chapter drafting as far as quantity goes. But those chapters, we started with the easier, the, the low-hanging fruit and to go in order. So Chapter One and Two are really the beginning part of the plan, what the plan is, who's it for, the legislative authority for us to do a plan, the requirements. So Chapter One and Two are kind of basic information. Chapter Two also has a snapshot of demographics. Again, that's going to be something that you'll see in every chapter as it relates to whatever topic that is. But Chapter Two gives a little snapshot, again, of who's living here, where, where they're driving, how long their commute is, maybe some agricultural numbers, housing, statistics, that kind of stuff. That also holds the vision statement, which is drafted primarily straight from public engagement and what we heard from the community. And then Chapters Three, Four, and Five are the start of what we call policy chapters. Those are your content, that's your topics. Transportation, housing, quality of life, which is what we'll end up calling the chapter for county services, Parks and Rec, public safety, et cetera. So Three, Four, and Five, we've gone through those. So that leaves Chapters Six through 12. Again, we're about halfway through when you just look at numbers, but these are the, the heavier chapters, if you will. So, you know, I don't know how many pages we're at now, maybe 120. It'll be a big one. This will be a big plan, but it's, hopefully going to be a good one and, and very, very usable compared to what we have now. So we'll keep the website up. This is upcoming. And we have work sessions scheduled, September, October, November, and December, to finish up going over the chapters. Of course, this is subject to change for a variety of reasons, external factors. We had to move one, may have been my fault, I can't remember. So life happens, we'll keep going with it. And I know I promised this to you the last time I was up here and I've told the Planning Commission, if at any point we feel like we need to put out another survey, hold another workshop, we can. We can adjust the schedule, but the schedule is, is bearing in mind the zoning ordinance work that we're kicking off tonight. We really want to get this adopted before we get that really, really going. So keeping the schedule we have now would finish up just in time for the, the zoning ordinance work sessions to start. So we're going to try to keep this as, as best we can, but if we have to change it, it's not the end of the world. Quickly, I'm going to go over some of the key themes that we pulled out of the first round of public engagement. And the reason I say it's Round One, we will take this back to the public. They have an opportunity now, they have an opportunity every single day to get on the website. It's, it's, it's there for them, but they also can come to every work session we have. But beyond that, we're going to take the plan back to them, whether it's here, maybe the Franklin Center, whatever makes sense, to have an open house at the very end where they can come and see the entire plan as, as one document. So when we talk about Round One, we're talking about those seven public workshops where we went to the election districts and sat down with them and the, the online survey. I tried to pull out some things for each of the, the general topics that this plan will touch on, of course, housing, transportation, land use, economy, and then county administration. Nothing was a surprise, absolutely nothing in there, which is a good thing, you know what to expect. And we have a pulse on what's happening even before going to the public and with an overdue plan. So that's good news. So for housing, we heard a lot about more housing options and variety. So not just single-family homes on an individual lot at a certain price point. We need housing for everybody. Also, to note, we heard this kind of across the board, is that as much as we need more housing, we need to be careful about where we're placing it. Put it where there might be jobs in the future. Put it where there might be infrastructure now or other housing. Not to say it couldn't go anywhere because we need it desperately, but there was a call to make sure that it's appropriate to where it's going. Transportation, we heard a lot about safety hazards, a lot about roundabouts. People love them. There, I'm probably going to get a call tomorrow that, no, we don't love them. But a lot of people said that. So we heard a lot about that and, you know, just general road maintenance, which, as you know, we have to hold hands with VDOT on that and work closely with them. The other big thing that we heard that we might have a little bit more control over, it's going to take some planning, is public transportation to some degree. I know we have the Faram Express. The Office of Aging has a service now, but we heard a lot, particularly for the low-income and aging populations, which have some carryover, but also they can be separate, separate groups. So we heard a lot for public transportation. That's not to say that I think anyone, hopefully, is not expecting a, a full-blown bus service countywide, you know, that runs at all hours of the day and night. But some sort of what's called micro-transit now, where you can get to point A, from point A to point B, a, a little easier than falling under an income bracket or an age bracket or a certain part of, of the county, kind of what our options are now, as good as they are. Land use, no surprise, agriculture and conservation were a huge one, making sure that those are planned for accordingly, protected as best as possible. County character, the rural character of the county, and I think I said this before we even started, before we even went to the community, it doesn't matter what we in the planning office are going to the public about, that's what we hear. So not surprising, we knew that that was coming. So not surprising, we knew that that was coming. Economy and workforce is a huge one. I would say that, depending on my memory for the day, if I had to tell you the biggest comment of all the public engagement, I would say it had to do with the workforce and jobs. So creating good job opportunities, making sure that we have the necessary things in place to get those employers here, and focusing on younger generations to keep them here. Again, hopefully, none of this is shocking to anyone. So I would say, again, depending on the day, that probably rose to the top the most. And then the last thing, lots of respondents writing in answers or sharing at the public workshops face-to-face. Curiosity about how in a changing landscape, this county will address those infrastructure needs. Economic development. Education was a big one, and I know it's a sticky subject sometimes, but I will remind you all, the survey and the workshops came at the tail end of two schools closing. So sometimes you have, when you read these results, you have to think about what was going on then and what's on the forefront of everybody's mind. Not saying it's not, you know, relevant at all, but we heard about it a lot. Mostly about, not so much the public school K through 12 necessarily, but setting those kids up so that if they do go off to college, they have a reason to come back. Or if they don't want to go to college, that's okay, having, you know, programs here that can keep them here with a good-paying job. And then we heard a lot about distributing public amenities and services equally inequitably throughout the county. Lots about parks and rec, little bit about libraries, but for the most part, folks seem to be okay with those. Two, two little things here I wanted to call out for you. This kind of sums up the good stuff and the bad stuff that we heard. Good stuff, rural character, pace of life, proximity to lakes. That's what's important to folks. I'm simplifying it, please read the survey results and the public workshop. But things that kind of, again, rose to the top again and again, top concerns, incentives for younger folks or even younger families. It wasn't even so much children, it was folks 33 and younger, instead of moving somewhere in Roanoke, move here and start a family. So making sure that that whether it's amenities, services, jobs, big task to to answer all of those, but heard lots about that, lack of job growth and availability, and then loss of rural character, of course, is a big one. So from that public engagement, paired with talking with county staff, the different department heads, we created a vision statement. Every comprehensive plan has one. Most long-range planning, regardless of what it is, private sector, public sector, whomever's making one, has some sort of vision statement. It sets the direction and tone for the entire plan. It's meant to express the ideal outcome for 20 years down the line. Remember, the comp plan is 20 years in the future. So we we wrote the vision statement in a way that we hope this, if you read this in 2045, that it's true. It's it's aspirational, it's 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 meant to be inspiring and and very positive. It's not necessarily meant to focus on on negative things in the present. You really want to to write this the way you want it to be true in the future, but also be realistic with the the limitations and opportunities that we have as a county. The Planning Commission had a work session. One of the very first ones was a visioning work session. They reviewed examples from other localities. They picked out what they didn't like and what they did like about other vision statements, what worked, what didn't work. They reviewed our old or current, I should say, vision statement and what felt right or good about that one and what didn't. They came to a consensus that I that they wanted to go with the with the list format to kind of touch on everything. I don't have it memorized, shame on me. But the current vision statement doesn't touch on every aspect of the community. Doesn't touch on transportation and housing and the government and infrastructure and utilities. We tried to with this one, we tried to kind of say, hey, we're not going to exclude anything from being its best in 2045. If you want me to read it now, I can. If you want to read it and and get back to me. But this is also on the website, which I'll go over with you. Any questions before I take you to the website? That's pretty much it. Quick recap for you, the progress that we've made. We're making good progress. It's a lot of work. Any questions?
Well done.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay. I'm going to show you the website very quick. Eric would be very glad because it's GIS. So. So if you go to, I just want everyone to know this, if you go to the regular website, not that. Oh, geez. Truly.
I know.
Okay, if you go to our regular web. Do I? Oh, okay, here we go. Okay, if you go to the regular website, hover over Government, hopefully you all know how to use this one. Go to Planning and Community Development. As soon as you get here, comprehensive plan, hopefully it's intuitive, go where makes sense. On this, I have put a link right here, so that when we say to the community, it's on the website, we've built a dedicated website only for the comp plan, and I'll tell you why. This platform, I don't even know what it's called. Most local governments use it, it's great. It has limitations, you can only do so much. The other one offers a little bit more interactive options. It looks a little better, which I catching things help. So they can access it either way. They can go straight to, basically, it's bit.ly/franklincounty2045 or come here, Safe Bet, click that, and it'll take them here. I have this on here, it's meant to be used on a desktop. It can be used on a phone or a tablet, but I put that up there just so someone doesn't call screaming that it doesn't look right. There's a homepage, quick recap of what the comp plan process is. There's a quick little schedule here, super fun, super cute, everybody loves it. And then there's a box here where you can put in your information if you want to get updates. So everyone that has done this, anytime we have an update of any of any kind, at this point, that's work sessions. Samantha in our office will email everyone on that list and say, hey, reminder, the work session's coming. You can go to the website, so on so forth. Contact info down there. I'm just going to quickly run through these tabs, I promise you'll eat. History of Franklin County, planning. Our first comprehensive plan was in 1975. I think sometimes folks forget that this has been around. This has been a thing, it's not new, we've been doing this, we've had to be doing this. And more importantly, we had Samantha, bless her, scan all of the old documents. So you can click right here and you can read the plan from 1975. So they're all on here. We tried to make this entire process so, so transparent. If you go to Documents, this is where all of the of the drafts will live. And we tried to break it down by work session. Again, when we send the packets out to the planning commissioners, they're put on here. So the Planning Commission doesn't get it before the public, everybody's getting it at the same time. So the public can be looking at this at the same time as the planning commission. So it seems really giant, and I wish it didn't seem that way. Okay, here we go. So again, I tried to say click here because it doesn't make sense to everybody, but all of these are clickable. So if you will, you can click this one for the public engagement. But for example, this is, let's go to a a policy chapter. You can click this. It's going to download it, I wish it didn't. And this is the draft chapter. So they can be reviewing it now, they don't have to wait until the end. So this is the Historic and Cultural Resources chapter, they can go through it, they can read about it, they can love it, hopefully, or they can hate it, hopefully not. And then we put in little surveys here so that folks feel like in the moment, they can share their feedback as it's happening. It's like imperative that they know that, they do not have to wait until the end. It's not being done in secret, it's not being done behind closed doors. Again, the work sessions are open to the public, these are open to the public review. These little surveys are pretty short and sweet. Do you think the chapter is missing any information? If yes, what is it? Do you agree with the goals, objectives, and strategies? Yes or no? If not, why not? They're open-ended, they can write as much as they want to. So we have those for each of them. And just again, to be transparent, so folks know what's coming, we don't have dates here, just in case they change. I don't want to, you know, get everyone's schedule messed up. But we have this here so they know to come back. They know what's going to happen, it'll be updated once we get to that point. Two more tabs. Get involved. The meat of this is already passed, of course, because the online public survey and the workshops have already passed. Hopefully, it comes across graphically, but if it's gray, that kind of means it's either not happening yet or it's over. Anything colorful, green light. Gray means pause. So the workshops are over, online survey is over, but if you click this. And this is what you all got today. Play nicely. Then. Everyone can be reading it at the same time. So we have a a summarization, if someone just wants to get the highlights. But if someone wants to read the actual results as as they were specifically and individually, it's all here. And then we just scroll down for you. We did the same thing. Not that. Lots of write-in answers. For the workshops, we even put more or less, like I said, transcripts. So we tried to 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 really write minutes, if you will, exactly an account of what happened at those workshops. I think most of you all were there at at your respective districts. Folks had activity sheets in front of them, so we painstakingly copied all of this down and compiled it. So this is not our summarization of it, this is actually what folks wrote. So that's on here. Planning Commission work sessions, as we get involved, just a reminder to folks, those are open to the public. Public open house will be at the end. And then last but not least, an FAQ page, what is a comp plan? Why are we updating it? Who's using it? So on so on. So I just want you to know that, this is here, it's it's been here, it'll be here till the end. Ideally, we would like to keep this forever and maybe turn some of the chapters into a webpage. I think as a county, we're a little bit far off from that. Some, for example, some localities only have interactive websites, if you will, as a comp plan. I don't know if we're there yet, I don't think I'm there yet. But we'd like to put something on here, so if someone just wants the highlights of a chapter, you know, really the policy, you know, what's what are the strategies? What has the board decided? Are the initiatives moving forward? So we'll kind of, we'll try to keep this website alive and well even after the process is done, just so everything comp plan related kind of has a home. But that's the website, please share it with folks, please use it. If you want a flyer, we have one, we can have Samantha or Amy send it to you. We'll we'll print them and give them to you, postcard size or something, if you want to hand them out. You know, mail's expensive, folks throw it in the trash, I know I do. So we tried to be digital. We we share it on social media, but sometimes word of mouth is more, is is more better, is better. So. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Stephanie?
Well done, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you.
Very much appreciate it.
It's all, it's all of us. It's, it has been a heavy lift, but we're all pitching in and we feel good about it. So I I hope we get a good plan, I think we will.
I wanted to give kudos to Stephanie. She did a presentation on Chapter Five, which is the Agricultural Resources section last night for the the Ag Development Committee. It has some amazing facts in there, and I wasn't aware that most communities don't have an an ag chapter. So what's included in there was, I think, very valuable. I would encourage anybody to check it out, just to see some of the demographics and statistics that were included in that. I was, I was not aware of all of them. So you guys are doing a great job. I think the committee really appreciated your presentation.
Thank you. They did, they they seemed like they were really listening. It was nice.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Enjoy dinner.
All right. At this time, we're going to take a break for dinner. We're going to break and and go back to B75, where we'll join with the Planning Commission. And unfortunately, I have a scheduling conflict and I have to leave and go to a meeting in Martinsville. And Supervisor Smith has graciously volunteered to reconvene the meeting right after dinner. So thank you, everyone, for coming, and I'm going to duck out and head south.
So Tim, we will be in B75 for the joint meeting.
You will be in B75 for the joint meeting, sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
You introduce yourself and tell which district you represent. That would be great. And I'm going to start here to my right.
Thank you, Lori. My name is Cheryl Aggie, I'm the Planning Commissioner for the Gills Creek District.
Good evening, I'm Chris Woodlow, County Administrator.
I needed a longer introduction.
I'm Mr. Evans, I'm on the Planning Commission, meeting hall.
I'm Lisa Cooper, I'm the Planning Director for the county.
Randy Rosser, Assistant County Administrator.
Brian Carter, Deputy County Administrator.
Steve Sayen, I'm Brian's deputy.
I'm Amy, ready to have her first words, you divide.
I'm Cecile Gaines, I'm with Berkeley Group. I'll let you all go around and then we'll introduce ourselves a little bit more.
Yeah, Chris Musa, also with Berkeley Group.
Seadown, Duff, Blue Ridge.
David Pendleton, White Water District.
David Clements, Rocky Mountain District, Planning Commission.
Marshall Jallison, Police and Supervisors, White Water District.
Dan Quinn, Board Supervisor, meeting hall district.
Nick Mitchell, Supervisor for the Snook Creek District.
Stephanie, in the Planning Department.
I'm Mike Carter, I'm the Rocky Mountain District Supervisor.
And I'm Laurie Smith, President of the Gills Creek District, and pitch heading this evening for our Chair and Vice Chair. So you've got me to put up with for a little while this evening. So, and also, would you guys like to introduce yourselves? We have a couple guests with us this evening.
Randy Goddard, most of you recognize me, attend a lot of your meetings. Thank you for all the work.
We're grateful for you guys taking time, I'm just going to leave. Thank you. Okay, what we're going to do with this one, first of all, I want to say how grateful we are on behalf of our board to be able to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. I was saying earlier to staff that I believe this is something we should probably strive to do annually, is to have a nice dinner together and be able to socialize and have some agenda topics to discuss. And so I'd like for our board to move forward and and look to engaging with you guys on doing something like that. If you'd be amenable to that, I think it would be great, and I think it's very needed. So anyway, I'll move on from that. Who is running? Chris, you have the opening remarks.
Yeah, sure, I'll just stand with everyone. And just, we reiterate to Supervisor Smith and her sentiments to the Planning Commission, let me just say, on behalf of the county staff, I know a lot of the hours that you must put in as Planning Commissioners. And I know it's a lot of work that you do, beyond just the zoning ordinance or the comp plan every month from public hearing, site visits, and so forth. And early on in my career, in my planning days, I remember the long hours that you all put in. And so on behalf of staff, I'd just like to thank the Planning Commission and certainly the Board of Supervisors. But thank you for all your work. And also, I'd like to welcome our our guests from the Berkeley Group. We look forward to having you run our discussion this evening. And we have a lot of work ahead of us with the zoning ordinance. It's a, it's a, I was sharing with Stephanie earlier, we just had an update from Stephanie on our comprehensive plans. Stephanie did a fantastic job of updating that. It's a really fun time. It's a lot of work, staff, when we were talking to us the other day, we have got a lot going on in this county. A lot of infrastructure, a lot of planning. This board's got a lot before it, but, you know, from a weird sense, it energizes staff. So on behalf of the staff, I'd just like to thank you all, look forward to the consultants walking us through this evening. So with that being said, I know our Planning Director, Lisa Cooper, is here with us. We're going to keep passing the baton around this evening. Madam Chair, I may ask Lisa Cooper to.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks. Yes, as being with the county for 19 years and dealing with the zoning ordinance that was written in 1988 and served its purpose, it has. As a staff person to the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, we are ecstatic about updating the zoning ordinance and having Berkeley Group, Cecilia and Chris, to be our representatives and to help us through this process. And we think with the Berkeley Group, we will get the zoning ordinance that we want, and it'll be easier for staff to use and developers and citizens. So I don't want to take any more time because I know they have a lot to talk about, and I think we should kick off this project, and I'm really excited about it. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much. The floor is open, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll I'll introduce myself a little. I'll introduce myself a little bit more. I'm Cecile Gaines. I've worked with Berkeley Group for two years, and before that, worked in the Roanoke County Planning Department for five years. And before that, I was in Blacksburg as a Planning Commissioner and Town Council Member, and I liked doing all that free work so much that I got a Master's of Urban and Regional Planning and became a planner. So I'm excited about working with Franklin County. I live in Roanoke, and so I'm close by, and I buy my milk from Franklin County, and I'm a live music fan, and I've heard more and more good bands coming out of Franklin County. So I'm excited to be working with you all.
We're delighted to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Chris Musa. I'm originally from New York, but I've been down here from Virginia about five years now after school. I worked at Rockridge County originally as a planner before coming on to the Berkeley Group. I've been with them for about three years now. I used to live in Lynchburg, so I'm pretty close, pretty familiar. I've recently moved to Richmond. Don't hate me, I know. And yeah, we're just super excited to be here. Obviously, Franklin County has partnered with the Berkeley Group to update the county's zoning ordinance and conduct a housing study. Just a little background of the Berkeley Group. Berkeley Group is a local government consulting firm. Hundred percent of our clients are local governments and public agencies. We do not work with private developers or anybody like that. We do all of our work for local communities. We like to call ourselves the experts in local government. That's what we want to do. We want to try and help those local governments that maybe need a little bit of help, so that's what we're here for. Our Planning and Community Development Team specializes in long-range planning, zoning, GIS, third-party land use reviews, ongoing staff support, hazard mitigation planning, resiliency, public engagement, and group facilitation. Quickly go over our agenda for the evening here. We're going to talk about the project, its overview and its schedule, and jump into the intent of the project. Why are we doing this? What's the reason behind updating the zoning ordinance? We're going to talk about what a zoning ordinance is. We're going to talk about why do we need it, what its purpose is, what's inside of it, what we'll be updating. We're going to talk about the community engagement that we'll be doing for this project to get some input from your public, local citizens. And then we'll have a brief discussion, ask you some questions, get your feedback, get your input. The real reason we're here tonight is to hear from you all. We like to say we're experts in local government, but you guys are experts in your community, so that's the reason we want to talk to you and your citizens. Finally, we'll cover a couple keys to success for this project and talk about the next steps going forward. Real quick project overviews. You can see that that is the zoning map, the official zoning map for Franklin County. The aim of this project is to completely update the existing zoning ordinance, which affects the colored area of the map on this slide. There's a big gray area in the South, you guys probably already know this, that is unzoned. As a reminder, the zoning ordinance and the update to the ordinance only applies to the areas of the county that is officially zoned, colored up on this map here and shown on the county's official zoning map. This update process will not expand or change that area. Additionally, the update will not change the official zoning map or the current zoning district boundaries. We will not be rezoning any property during this process. These are only, there are only two ways that the zoning district boundaries can be changed. One, through a land order application or rezoning, or the Board of Supervisors going through a large public rezoning process, which is outside of the scope of this project. I just want to reiterate that and make sure that's clear going forward. So this project will be conducted over three phases: investigation, content development, and adoption. Unique aspect of this project is a small area housing study, which will be conducted during the investigation phase. This effort is being paid for by a grant, and the purpose of the grant is to help localities identify barriers to housing inside of, not just inside of their ordinance, but that grant study will help guide our work in the zoning ordinance to see how we can help reduce those barriers to housing. In addition, we'll be conducting a general diagnostic of the existing ordinance to identify any challenges or opportunities for improvements. We've already begun work on the project with a kickoff meeting with your staff that let them indicate to us certain problematic areas with the zoning regulations in county, as well as identify the area to conduct the housing study, which was chosen as the Union Hall area, DGA, I believe is it is. So next up, following that, you can see on the star on this little schedule here, we're at the PC and BOs kickoff. After that, we'll do the diagnostic and housing study, but directly after, we'll be doing our public engagement, public outreach. We will be working on the zoning diagnostic housing study. We'll be conducting four focus group sessions and two public workshops on September 23rd. The survey will be open between September 20th and October 25th, and that'll be available to all citizens online. And the second workshop will be held on October 23rd. The next time we meet, the next joint meeting will be in January. That date is still to be determined, but at that meeting, we'll come back to you with all the results of the community engagement that we've conducted. We will share with you the proposed structure of the revised ordinance. We'll share the housing study report, land use report, as well as the diagnostic that we do, we conduct. This schedule, I know it's a little small, the radio, if you can see at the back, feel free to speak up and ask me questions if you need. I can tell you what the dates are. The schedule lays out the roadmap for this project. As you can see, we will be starting, we're starting here in August 2024. The entire project is looking to be finished by June or July summer of 2026. We'll be holding bi-monthly work sessions during the drafting phase, during the content development phase with the Planning Commission. And we'll also be holding two Board of Supervisor updates, one in July and one in November, to come back to you and share with you the progress of the project. After we finish our drafting, we'll go into the adoption phase, which we will go back to the public with the complete drafted zoning ordinance sometime in March is what we have on here. These dates are tentative, things are subject to change, obviously. But we'll go back to them in an open-house format meeting, where they'll be able to read the plan and come up to us and ask us questions. We'll have visuals and graphics. We'll go through a brief presentation of the key changes and highlights and get the feedback from the public, see what they like, see what they don't like. We'll come back to you, share that information with you. You'll let us know what you like or don't like, any final changes that you want to see. Make those changes, and then we'll go into public hearings and adoption in the summer of 2026. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cecilia, and she is going to talk about, more about the intent of the project.
All right. So our project intent is multifaceted. One is to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with Code of Virginia. It's to clarify language and make the ordinance more understandable and easier to use, to identify and remove barriers to housing development, to modernize and categorize definitions and uses and apply best practices, and streamline the zoning ordinance by reducing wording and improving referencing ability. And lastly, to implement the comprehensive plan strategies as applicable. I forgot to mention that we are right now wrapping up Rocky Mountain's new zoning ordinance, and Chris and I have been doing that project as well, and David Clements, bless his heart, has been going through that for almost two years. So if you have any questions, he probably is a good person to ask, too. I'll volunteer you.
Thank you.
So while the comprehensive plan sets policy, goals, and strategies, the zoning ordinance is one of the most effective tools to implement some of those strategies. The zoning ordinance regulates the use of land and structures such as size, height, area, and location. It ensures light and air, convenience and safety, facilitates public services and amenities, and protects from destruction, obstruction, encroachment, congestion, and dangerous and adverse impacts. There will be three different methods for the community to be involved throughout this process. The community survey is designed to gather wider input about the zoning ordinance from the general public. It will be available both online and paper. There will be two public workshops designed to gather specific targeted input from residents who are interested in zoning. And then we'll have four focus group listening sessions that will gather input from community experts. We ask you to please help promote the survey to your constituents. We've designed a flyer for your use, and Stephanie can give you extra copies if you need them. So please use those to get the word out, and also post it on your social media pages. Two public workshops will be held on the evenings of September 23rd and October 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Franklin Center. These workshops are identical, so there's no reason for people to go to both of them. So you can encourage people to go to whichever one works for them. The agenda is shown on the slide. Participants will be asked to engage in exercises, to share their ideas and concerns regarding zoning and land use in the zoning portion of the county. They will be asked about quality of development, specific land uses, including a variety of housing types and neighborhood development, agriculture, event venues, and home occupations. They will also give input on community character and design elements such as signage, building height, landscaping, parking, and lighting. The focus group sessions will be held on September 23rd. These are designed to glean input from your community experts in their fields who have experience with development and land use in the county. Participants can also take the survey and go to the workshops if they'd like to, but these groups are kind of pinpointing and trying to pull out specific information. Three of these groups will focus on housing for the housing study, and the fourth will focus on agriculture. Participants will receive a list of relevant questions to prompt discussion, but the conversations are meant to have issues with the zoning ordinance and housing needs for the community. On the slide, you see there are four sessions scheduled for about an hour and a half each, and the format will be a roundtable discussion among people sharing the same interest and expertise. And just stop me if you have any questions.
See, I might just add that, so when they spoke about the number of work sessions and public meetings, those are the ones that you're actually conducting. So just for the board's information, like, you know, there'd be many other updates, such as Stephanie did today on the comp plan. There'll be Friday packet information and so forth. So I just wanted to clarify that the two meetings that they talked about with the board is just the two that they will actually be attending and be part of. So I didn't want the board to think they only had two opportunities to kind of engage in the process of that, because.
Yes, thank you, Steve. And just one quick question. The focus groups, are they by invitation to citizens or is it open?
They will be by invitation. We've worked with staff. They are coming up with lists of about eight to 10 people to invite for each one, and we target them to small groups to really try to have good discussion.
Thank you.
And then the public, the public workshops and survey are for that wider information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. At this point, we want to kind of stop and have discussion. We're going to be needing your input throughout the process, and this evening, we want to start by going through these questions and discussing your thoughts about the zoning ordinance. And if there's something that's not in these questions, feel free to bring that up, too. But we'll start with, what do you see as the strengths in the current ordinance? And I'll call on somebody if you want, but just jump in.
What was your prompting question again?
What do you see as strengths in the current ordinance?
Or what do you like about the current ordinance?
So I would encourage the group just to, let's just kind of work as one, rather than the Planning Commission versus the Board of Supervisors. Let's collectively have discussion around the table to contribute to what they're concerned about.
Yeah, and we'll take notes, so.
So positives. What are some of the positives and strengths that you all see as the zoning code, zoning ordinance is?
What about the process itself, your meetings, and what do you get a site development review in front of you? You know, are there things that you really like to see that are being required, or things that you would like to see that aren't being required currently? No, we're not all as super familiar with the zoning ordinance code itself as a staff might be, but.
I'll just go first. I think that, you know, the zoning code itself is very intuitive and it's very informative to the county in terms of how we want to encourage and develop land use, especially as it relates to that alignment with comp plan and how the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors rely on it to make decisions on special use permits and, you know, as we look at the byright and special use permit uses. It's kind of like, for me personally, it's the bible for me when it comes to planning and zoning issues. So I think there's a lot of strength to be taken away when we think about the use of it, utilization, and how it instructs and informs our organization and our commission to help us make good informed decisions.
Are you all not, okay. Don't be shy. Don't, I'm not going to let you be shy. No. Miss Aggie, did you hear me though?
I would just say that I think that the different zones that we have are well-defined, so we have good definitions for each of the zones that we do have, and I think that's very helpful as I'm doing my work.
Any other strengths, positives? Do y'all need caffeine? We'll make some coffee.
I'll say one other thing, too, is that the organization of the zoning ordinance makes it very easy to look through. You know, each section starts out the same way with the same definition, and then the byright uses, and then the special use permit. So it's the organization of it, I think, makes it easy to find things.
So you like that consistency?
Yes.
And I would say in our current zoning ordinance, it's user-friendly. You know, we've got those links on the county website, and we, as laypeople in the Board of Supervisors world, you know, that's what I would speak to. I find that I can easily, you know, do excerpts from the zoning ordinance to send to constituents, and it's user-friendly and it's understandable. And I think that's very important, that this document be understandable and relatable.
I'm not sure that this falls into any one of those items, but I'll just bring it up. So I think that there's been somewhat of a weakness in the application of the zoning ordinance for properties around the lake, and particularly, it seems like the areas around the lake were all zoned A1 in the beginning, and then as developers have come in and they have built residential neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods have been improved, it's been up to the developer whether they leave it zoned as A1 or they zone it as R1. And so you now have this hodgepodge of A1 and R1 adjacent to each other. And so it's just made me wonder whether it would be possible, I realize that the developer is the one that has to initiate a change, right? The county can't utolaterally tell the developer they're going to change. However, it's made me wonder, when we approve a neighborhood, you are, they're going to take this A1, they're going to produce a residential neighborhood, could they make a contingent upon that developer changing it from A1 to R1? So you're not forcing the developer to do it. However, you're making his or her development contingent upon making that change, and it would bring about some consistency to the properties around the lake. So it doesn't fall into one of those, but I'll just off that up.
Well, it calls into weaknesses, so we can move on to weaknesses if you'd like.
Does anybody have any positives here, good takeaways?
Well, I was thinking, and I'm too new to know exactly what I'm talking about, but when I look at what's available as an option under A1, it's a page of all the things that A1 allows you to be. And so I was just curious, is that a good thing for local government to have that immense amount of flexibility based on being A1? And therefore, it could be whatever the, just, A1 doesn't mean anything to me when I look at it, because it could be so many different things. But is that a good thing for local government to have that kind of flexibility? That's just, I don't know, is it a good thing or a bad thing?
That's a good point.
We're not going to answer these questions tonight for the sake of time.
I was asking.
I know, but I just wanted to say, we're not going to try to answer them tonight, but throughout this process, we certainly will, so please keep bringing them up, but don't think we're ignoring you by it.
I think the public in general, on the order.
I think the public in general on the ordinance just don't understand when they bought property what their designation was. And it causes some hardships on down the road when they really think they had one thing, but they don't say what. If it could be a little clearer on people on what it pertains in the ordinances and stuff, it would help some.
We had that exact situation occur at the last, well, at the Tuesday meeting where a property owner purchased land and it was zoned B1 commercial, and they bought it with the intent to build a house, and you're not allowed to build a house. And so they clearly hadn't figured that out ahead of mind if they bought the property to do something they couldn't do. So it's exactly to you.
Mr. Quinn, I think that property, the front of it was B1, and then the remainder parcel was A1. I think it here are two zoning classifications.
But the part they wanted to build on.
Correct. It was B1. Yes, sir.
Sometimes, one of the signs that you need to change your ordinance is when you're getting a whole lot of SUP applications or rezonings. Have you all had any of those? Have you, like, if you can think of examples of those, that might remind you of some weaknesses in the ordinance.
I know in my district, you know, I think what's been articulated by Mr. Quinn with A1 and residential zoning. In my district, it poses a real difficulty in things like short-term rentals. We have a lot of short-term rental SUPs come up. And, you know, we've had two neighborhoods that, you know, that I've helped rezone to R1. Those neighborhoods were wanting protections of R1 versus, you know, all of the multitude of uses, as Victor said, in A1. So, you know, I think consistency and compatibility and alignment with our zoning classifications and the buy right uses, I think those things need to align better. And I think somebody else said earlier, clearly, back in 1988, we were mostly agricultural in here in Franklin County. And there was a mostly A1. And so we've got a completely different county today. And so it's just like with many things we touch, we need to make sure that our zoning ordinance is compatible with today's uses and expectations.
Where does HOA is coming in with communities down here in this area? How does, I'd like to, I'm new to it, so, but I don't really understand this, that all it could have got to do with HOA community. Is that going to block some of the stuff coming in, the SUPs? Can?
I will at least answer that. I think I know the answer, but I'm ready to get it from the source.
We, as a staff, we don't enforce restricted covenants of an HOA. And we don't look at them when you come in for a special use permit. It's the owner's responsibility to know what's in their restricted covenants, not ours. So like, if you, let's say, you do a use that's not allowed in a restricted covenant, I can't say that you can't, you cannot give me that special permit because your restricted covenant say that it's not allowed. You have the right to turn that in to my office and me to take it through the process.
I would, just to help, I would add to that, that in general, the HOA can have stricter requirements, but they can't have looser requirements. And in the case where they have stricter requirements, their requirements are going to trump the zoning requirements. So for example, our STR restriction is 30 days or less, right? If you rent for 30 days or less, that's a short-term rental. The HOA can come along and say, well, for us, you can't rent for 90 days or less. And so that HOA restriction of 90 days or less will trump the 30-day or less restriction that's in the zone.
But I don't enforce that. So if you bring it to me, I have to accept your application. It's up to the HOA to enforce that.
Does that answer your question?
Does that answer your question?
I think what Marsh was getting at is, so if you have a neighborhood that has an HOA, but it still has zoning classifications in it, all one, all one, all A1, and then all the rest around. That one, so, but say there's an HOA that says no short-term rentals, but this A1 lot comes to you for a special use permit, can we still grant them an SUP? Or is the HOA?
Actually, you can still grant them an SUP. If we know, like, if you come to me and I know that you're restricted covenants because you've handed them to me, say that you can't have short-term rentals, I will give you the advice that your HOA says it's prohibitive, you might want to talk to an attorney, but I still can accept the application.
We sent this last week, the week before last, in our meeting, and I thought it was pretty educational. It was zoned for a certain use. The guy was going to apply for the SUP. And he had the buy right to do it. So the HOA didn't, they didn't want it allowed. So as a community, you can take them to court is what I got out of that meeting.
Well, they changed their restricted covenants before he went.
Yeah, that was under, anyway. They changed it right as he was coming in. Pulled it in my, pulled it right under his feet. But as a community, they can go after to enforce what their HOA is, even though by the zoning, it's legal and it's allowed or whatever you can call the term. But yeah, no matter what you do, if there's a restrictor, they can go after it because it's in their HOA, it's in the property when he bought it. It should have been disclosed to him, the way I see it. But they can still go at it legally, not so much through the government of the county.
If they do that, they go after you. Are you still going to present, is it still going to come before the board before it's settled?
If I can, if they still submit it to me and want, submit it to my staff and wants to continue the process, then I will take it through until they withdraw.
Yeah, a good way to think of them, try not to merge the two. The two live in their own world. So zoning ordinance is handled by the local government, and then an HOA restricted covenant, think of them as a zoning ordinance that only applies to that community. And they both live at the same, they both have to follow the rules in both of them if you live within an HOA. The local government doesn't handle the HOA. That's handled through the courts by the private, whoever, the developer, whoever's running the HOA. That makes sense. So they both apply, but for staff, they don't really matter. So we kind of pretend that they don't exist because we don't enforce them. If that makes sense.
Because our code is, you know, it's codified law basically. And so it's enforceable. The board of supervisors adopts that into our formal code, and that's what we live by. And just to continue to clarify, we have a responsibility to enforce our code. And the planning commission and board of supervisors, we have our due diligence processes. So, but it's up to the owner, if they're a part of an HOA, POA, they've got to deal with that separately and apart from any declaration by the county. Does that help? No?
It helps, but like I said, at some point, we approve it, okay? And then the HOA takes it to court, goes through the whole system, and says, no, you can't do this. What happens to our SUP?
It's probably going to be the adjudication by the court. Would it not loosen? Well.
SUP is still valid.
Yeah, the SUP is still valid.
Because if the HOA resolves, then they can do that use, you know? The SUP will run the land unless you put a condition on it that it expires after a set amount of time.
But if the property owner, if he or she is taken to court, and the judge says, you shall stop that short-term rental, it would probably be in their best interest to stop even though they have the SUP.
So as it relates to the second inquiry up here, do you all feel, I'll just prompt a question, do you all feel that we need to articulate short-term rentals differently from a policy perspective as we're rewriting? You know, short-term rentals will be part of the rewrite. So you might want to think about that when we get to that. Is that fair, Lisa?
Yes, if that's something that's important to the planning commission and to the board of supervisors. You see a lot of short-term rentals come in front of you. And if it's important and you want to change the regulations in the zoning ordinance, this is the time to do it.
Right. So what other weaknesses or troublesome areas do you all experience in your work? Just think about different cases perhaps that come before you and things that have caused you angst and a lot of heartburn. And you look at the ordinance and you say, gosh, I wish it said this instead of that.
I think the short-term rental should have a much more clean-cut, rubber-stamp deal to where instead of, it's basically coming before us and it's just a, and then sometimes you wind up regret when people change their mind on doing something.
Sure.
And there's nothing you can do about it except to have heartburn. I think there should be more of a rubber stamp thing, you do it through the checklist.
I think it should be handled with the leases department taking away from us totally.
Well, and the suggestion's been made, do we turn it over to the board of zoning appeals as a responsibility, given that it is a zoning matter? I think that there are options, but this whole discussion is going to allow us to really walk into these issues and clearly ourselves, think about how can we make this better? Is the usage that we're being asked to apply, does it make sense? Does it represent our thinking and how we're approving and disapproving things that are in front of us?
Kind of saying it a little bit differently than Nick, I find that we don't have a really logical and objective process for considering the SUPs for STRs. And that makes it very hard for somebody like, I want logic and objectivity to it. And so, and to that I would add, I consider the SUP is really a form of a zoning variance. It's not called that, but it really is. You're varying the prescribed use of that property. And so part of my decision-making has been to think about, well, when you have a zoning variance, you should be considering all the community's point of view, whether they like it or not like it. That should have a big bearing on what you do. But for every one of these STR, when they come up, nobody wants to do them. And so if that was my gauge, I would vote against all of them, but that doesn't seem right either. And so it puts us in a real quandary with whether to approve or disapprove an STR because there are clean criteria for the evaluation.
Ms. Eddie, could you?
Yes, I'd like to add one other thing to that. The zoning ordinance does give us a definition and a purpose for each of our districts. So the R1 and the A1 districts both have clear definitions as to what they're for. So R1 is for residential, A1 is for agricultural uses. Because we have so many communities, as was mentioned previously, that are still zoned A1 when they are really in fact small suburban almost neighborhoods where people are living on quarter-acre lots or, you know, slightly larger or even slightly less, those uses are not compatible with STR. So I think if we redefined what we want to allow in each of our districts, and I think my district would be most happy if R1 did not allow short-term rentals. And then it would be very easy to decide, is the short-term rental going to be allowed in this district?
Because they don't.
If it's R1, you don't allow it, that's part of our zoning ordinance. It's only because they're still listed as A1 that it becomes this quandary of what to do with them. And we really spend a lot of our time, the majority of our time on the planning commission has really been spent reviewing STR applications, which is, you know, not really a good use of time, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, we usually recommend, if you're running into those situations, it's exactly the, sorry, I can't read your name.
Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Mitchell pointed out, it's a great way just to kind of clear some slate and some pressure off you. If you're putting the same conditions and the same SUP over and over and over again, just take those conditions and turn them into use standards that apply to that use all across the board and make a buy right. And as long as they meet those conditions, then staff can just rubber stamp them, send them on their way. Makes everybody's life a bit easier.
Well, I think it's been helpful to hear the varying perspectives and interpretation that what we use will be for. Thank you guys for sharing that. That's important stuff. So any other weaknesses that you all would like to identify?
So I'll put another one out there. And I really, some of the things, I don't even know if they fall into your subject area, but there are properties that have a lot of junk on them, that are in highly visible areas. And so it doesn't seem so problematic when their collection of junk is kind of out of sight, but it's a problem when it's right on the main road. And so we get, I get complaints about, it's not tons of property, but there are properties where they have just a lot of junk. And so is that part of the zoning ordinance or not?
It is.
It can be. It can be and it can't be. It's difficult to say if junkyards are a use in your zoning ordinance or not. So if you can determine something is, falls under the definition of a junkyard, then it's regulated as a junkyard through the zoning ordinance. There's also maintenance ordinances, like lawn care maintenance ordinance. I doubt Franklin County has that. That's usually cities. An ordinance that requires people to upkeep their lawn, basically. Towns and cities usually have those, but counties less so. So it could be handled in a couple of different ways.
It's also an enforcement issue. So I understand you all don't have an enforcement officer. So, you know, Lisa and Steph don't have time to drive around checking how tall people's grass is and whether their sign is compliant.
We just, we just put a compliance, a zoning enforcement.
Awesome. We're going to have a new position.
Awesome. Okay, so that'll help a lot with what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, if we're.
So I'd like to ask an educational question.
They will pay their salary.
Listen, baby.
Educational question is, the fact that the character of a piece of property is not determinant of the zoning status, spot here. So everything was A1. And then obviously, a lot of A1 parcels have nothing to do with agriculture. They're purely residential. So how unreasonable is it that if something is developed to be something that's no longer, you know, you take an A1 parcel and we make it look like something else, residential, it's not automatic stipulation that, oh, this is no longer A, it's now R? Something, somebody has to now say, it was A, I'm responsible for that parcel, and I would like to make it R.
Well, typically, the way the zoning ordinance should work is each district has its standards that you can build to. So ideally, all your different districts have standards for exactly what you want in those districts. And so they don't automatically get rezoned, but if your standards are too loose, you've got, you're allowing way too many uses in A1 that shouldn't be in A1, then that's going to start happening. It doesn't rezone the property because that's allowed in that district. So what you need to do is change what's allowed, and then that will match the uses, the standards for development to each district.
Okay, so taking that, this process could result in making a clearer definition?
Yep.
And when that definition becomes changed, does that mean some things that remain A1 now would then have to become R1 because they no longer meet the A definition?
Yeah, so what she means by standards is that you have district standards, and a district really is kind of defined by a standard. And think of it as kind of a pyramid with like Conservation C1 on the bottom, and these are like very large areas that really nothing's done on, they're just open fields. And then you get into agriculture or rural areas, and it's, the standards are really made up of the lot sizes and the density of buildings and developments in that area. So as you go further up the pyramid, you go A1, R1, R2, you kind of get smaller and smaller, things get closer together, parcels are smaller and smaller. So if you have a problem in A1 with houses looking a lot closer than they should, in your opinion, then we just need to adjust that. Either the lot size, the minimum lot size, or the allowable density on a parcel. And that's things that we can play with and we'll get into on this. But to answer your question, if we change anything in the zoning ordinance, anything that's existing currently will continue to exist legally in a non-conforming status, legal non-conforming status, which is akin to grandfather, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So does that stick with that property?
Now, we'll stay with the property as long as that use remains, a use basically. So if a business isn't a legal non-conforming business, even though the zoning ordinance says, hey, you can't have this business in this zone, but it was like that before we made the change, they can keep doing that unless they stop their business for two years. And so as soon as that two-year time span of that business is no longer in business, now they have to adhere to the zoning ordinance, that parcel, that land does.
But that two years is up to you. We can change how long they can do it. Um, there is the state codes two years?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, what's wrong about that?
That's good.
Um, but they can't make it more non-conforming? So, let's say you have an apartment building, it's A1, it becomes non-conforming. You can't build more apartments onto it, you can't make it more non-conforming than it is. But this, like we said, this process is not gonna rezone anything or change boundaries. But once we're done with this process, you all might wanna consider rezoning areas to suit what the county needs. Right now, your zoning map kind of looks like a lot of spot zoning. And I don't mean that, um, as an insult, but that's the way it started way back when. And now, your needs are changing. So, you may decide, well, this whole area around the lake that looks like R1, let's rezone it R1. You know, like you can decide to do that, but you would wanna wait till you have your zoning ordinance in place to consider that.
I have a question with regard to boundaries changing. Um, I'm sure staff has probably mentioned this to you, but we've got our designated growth areas, our DGAs. And, uh, in my district, as an example, there is a desire to adjust the DGA boundary. Now, do you all find distinction between adjusting a DGA boundary with a zoning boundary?
So, zoning doesn't really, DGAs have really nothing to do with zoning.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
But a lot of times that you'll see it are overlay districts.
That's right.
Do, do, everybody understands what an overlay district is or going to clarify?
Yeah, you gotta clarify.
So, a lot of the, a lot of times, those'll, um, follow the boundary of a DGA. An overlay dist- district is basically just additional regulations or loosening regulations on top of an existing zoning district. So, something's zoned R1, but you wanna allow an additional use or two in that R1 area, just in that little section, that little village, you can put an overlay district on top of it and then that overlay district will, um, kind of change the regulations a bit. Does that make sense?
So, adjusting a DGA boundary would be an exercise outside of this that would be pursued, um, car hack.
Comp plan.
Comp plan?
Comp plan.
Okay, there you go. There you go, okay.
Not to cut you off, but it's, I, I thought you think that's where you were going.
Okay.
That's a comp plan.
All right.
Cool.
And then, just to, just to tie them together, if, if a boundary, if the DGA boundary is adjusted in a comp plan, we've talked many, many times over the last year at this point. That's one of the many reasons you do the comp plan first.
Yeah.
So that your overlay matches your DGA and the West Lakes do not.
They do not.
The overlay is smaller than the DGA.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Perfect question, but that's a comp plan and overlay is, wow.
So, at, at the risk of being outside of your scope again, I'll just keep mentioning things. So, we, we have a, a, I've seen a case where there was a piece of A1 property on a fairly main road and it got, um, turned into a residential piece of property on that fairly main road and carved up into about one-quarter lots, one-quarter acre lots. And, and each lot dumps out onto the, I mean, the driveway goes onto the main road. It's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And so, now, it seems like it would've been much better to have a feeder road where all fifteen houses dumped into a feeder road. And now, you had one road going onto the main road. Instead, you now have fifteen driveways on the main road. So, again, I don't know if that's inside or outside of your scope. I'm just mentioning things that I think about that could be within a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. And that is, that's some zoning, but it's largely also subdivision. So, your subdivision ordinance is separate from zoning because it's the whole county. So, those kind of changes can be made in your subdivision ordinance as well. Any new items? Any new zoning items? New issues?
And you wanna see that you don't have currently? Anything your constituents say, hey, I wanna do this, but zoning doesn't let me?
How about the addition of, uh, small homes beside, behind an existing, um, shared mother-in-law house?
Like an accessory dwelling?
Yeah, I think that's a good, good one. Accessory dwellings and tiny homes.
Yeah.
And the tiny homes, we have a couple of issues. Um, so things like in my district, two storage units being put together and called a house. Um, we've got to make sure we're addressing these different, these newer applications, which may have come under accessory dwellings at some point. I don't know.
So, like an example, it's converting the, uh, tractor-trailer boxes into, into a dwelling or something is one of those examples. New things that you're seeing people moving.
Yeah.
That wasn't envisioned in nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, and so, from a zoning perspective, it's what, what building code says. If, if the building permit says it's a home, then we classify it as a home. Um, unless you have a specific design guideline, which is, is a whole other route, but I don't.
But I, I, I think it's gonna matter though if we, you know, have very, as an example, different, you know, R1, R2, R3, you know, where we think very prescriptively over what types of homes, you know, single-family dwelling, what have you, duplex, tiny homes or what have you. And, and paying attention to the compatibility, um, of, of different types of housing. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
It does. Um, we, we will be covering things like single-unit dwellings, uh, duplexes, townhouses, apartments, that kind of thing. Tiny home is kind of a term for a type of home that we don't put into, I think, ordinances. Some people might, but I wouldn't recommend it. Cause it's just kind of a bad architectural style. If you had a historic design review board that was saying, you know, what color houses can be, what they can, materials they can be made of, that could regulate that. Um, it's not something I would recommend for Franklin County, but, um, hu- a home is a size, whether you think it's tiny or huge is, doesn't matter. It's, if it's a, a well-built home that, that passes building code, it's a house. So, um, we don't really work with tiny homes. And as far as containers go, that's the building materials. So, zoning doesn't say what your building materials have to be. They, we say what the setbacks are, what type of, you know, whether it's a single unit, double unit, that kind of thing. But, um, we don't, but it's building code that, that looks at what it's actually made of.
Yeah, cause the struggle with this one case, it's an R1 neighborhood. Um, and I've got R1 single-family dwellings. And then there are two storage buildings stuck together. And they're doing everything they can to meet building code and to get their, their, you know, their occupancy remit. Um, and the neighbors bought into an R1 neighborhood, didn't expect that, right? As a compatible bill, in an R1 neighborhood, it's almost restrictive. So, from my perspective with that experience, I would love to have something that enables us, you know, to say there are certain zoning categories where this is not allowed.
Yeah, so the only way we can regulate that is through an ARB, an architectural review board, that specifically looks at every development within a specific area and gives guidelines as to what material can be used, what color can be. But we'll get into that kind of layer on the project when we start into drafting and see kind of what, what the deal is, what you guys think. We'll get back to your community first before we dive too deep into it.
Or the other, the other way is back to the HOA.
Yes.
It's the HOA, you can regulate the size and the material.
That's true.
The type of structure.
Yes, that, and that's typically HOAs. If you buy into that type of neighborhood, all that is regulated. But, um, creating an ARB is a pretty big deal and it's pretty, um, up, you know, it can get a lot of controversy. So, I wouldn't wanna do that unless your comp plan is, is recommending that for certain areas of the county. So, because that really needs a lot of public input.
Yes.
Whether, I mean, if you're gonna start regulating that deeply, I think your community needs to know about it upfront.
Thank you.
All right, how about, um, any other zoning-related issues that haven't been discussed? I know Chris asked this before, but have you had anybody complaining to you about certain regulations or asking for regulations or asking not to have certain things? Any hot, hot topics other than the short-term rentals?
I'll mention another one. So, we had a number of areas around the lake that are silting in. And so, I don't know, ten years ago, you might've war-skied in this area and now you can walk across it. And so, as these areas silt in, more and more houses that used to be lakefront are no longer lakefront, right? And so, part of the challenge in that is what are, what are you allowing upstream of that from a zoning perspective that allows that sediment to, to flow in like that? And part of it's natural, but I think part of it's unnatural in some of the uses, the land uses that we're allowing that encourage that sediment into the lake.
What kind of land uses would cause that?
Mountain valley pipeline.
Logging is a big one because they're not required to use silt fencing.
And is that happening in the county or is it upstream from the county?
In the county.
In the county.
Unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction over mountain valley pipeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we have jurisdiction on logging either. I think that's protected, right, by the, yeah.
Yeah, and the sedimentation issues, um, I know we're doing a video initiative at T-Lock that's just beginning, um, to look at sedimentation. But I think to Dan's point, you're really wondering about what types of land uses are exacerbating sedimentation.
Exactly.
Uh, and, you know, and if there's one case, it might even be in your district where there are homes that are up on a knoll, uh, you know, you get a bit of rain and then they've got a lot of impervious runoff, right? And it's ending up across the street and down into the lake. You know, and so, where that's occurring, they're noticing sedimentation. So, it's about, at least in my opinion, it's about our, um, our rules, if you will. You know, what we require builders and developers as they're building out subdivisions and so forth.
Absolutely. And your stormwater management, which is not in zoning, it's in your county code. Those, you can look at tightening up those regulations, um, especially with, you know, silt fencing and all that kind of stuff. But that's a big problem, all that runoff.
And I would add, um, which Dan brought up a little bit ago. I feel, and, and dealing a lot this summer, whether, regard, irrespective of what the zoning classification is, people that are running businesses in areas that are, are not allowed and also people that are basically junking up their yards and making it, um, very difficult to live near, um, or drive by, um, for various reasons. Um, and it becomes a burden on our planning department and our, you know, code enforcement officer that's coming on board as to how, is there anything in the zoning ordinances where we should be looking at perhaps being more restrictive or articulating it more broadly in the zoning ordinance? I don't know, but that is an issue I've been seeing a lot more of.
That's good to know. Yeah, we can tighten up the ordinance and then once you have a code enforcement officer, they will know what they're out there looking for.
Can be handled by cops now.
What's that?
Can be handled by cops now. Oh, no, can be handled by zoning officials now, yes. Before, you had to go to the cops, but now, yes, yeah.
The other one that's come up is the fines and, and penalties for violations.
Yeah.
You'll probably find that we might not be keeping up with code.
Yeah, you're out, you're out of compliance right now with those, so.
Yeah, well, the, the other one I wanted to bring up maybe just for the group is the process. Cause the zoning ordinance also addresses the process of rezoning, especially use permit. And, and right now, our process is, you know, planning commissioner here at one month, the board is a month later. That's something that can be modified, it can be looked at. There are certain statutory requirements for notices, but there are, it could be tighter, it could be longer. I don't know if you've heard much one way or the other about changes to that process. You know, sometimes people will say it takes too long. I think if you compare it to Loudoun or, or somebody else in Northern Virginia, it's probably much faster. Um, so it could be the person's perspective, but I'm just curious if you've heard much discussion or concern about either way or everybody's kind of happy with where the process kind of currently stands. The, that'd probably be good for them to know as well.
I know developers and builders that I work with, you know, timeframes are never, they're never short enough. You know, and time is money in their world, of course. So, do these things need to be looked at? I would say absolutely. I mean, our zoning ordinances are so old and antiquated. You know, I think we're looking at everything. Lisa?
Well, I think it's, it's more of, you know, do, do you like the way it works now? Or do you wanna, if there are, if it can be tightened, is, is that something that everyone is interested in? You know, there are some negatives to that, obviously. It's, it cuts down on the internal staff review time to review each application and have those DRT meetings and kind of gain information. But it also kind of could quicken the process for, for those developers and for those folks that want to do something. So, just curious if there was much of a desire to, to really change it and kind of leave the process as is?
What are you, planning commissioners? What's, would you all like to weigh in on that from your perspectives?
Well, when it came, to my mind, Steve was, when I see what's presented to the planning commission for their, uh, recommendation, how many different agencies are supposed to weigh in with their, um, opinion for, from VDOC to DEP to, and I have to go look at the list of all the different agencies that are supposed to take a look at this before we finally get to decide what to recommend. It seemed like a strength in that for all those having to look at it, it seems to go quickly given the number of different agencies that have to do the reviews.
That would be your development team, internally acknowledged as the development team, where all those entities come together to review site plans and conceptual plans and so forth.
It's amazing how many.
Yeah, but it's a good solid review.
Yeah, it's just, if you do short in that time frame, it makes that more challenging to, to, yeah, kind of to your point, it makes that more challenging to get that information. And I know what we try, have always tried to do is provide the commission and the board as much of that information as, as we can to, to make an informed decision, so.
And I'll bring up something that I know staff's gonna kill me for. Um, but it's just something that troubles me as a supervisor and I'm not sure how dramatic it is to this exercise you want to tell me. Um, we as a board of supervisors approve SUPs all the time with work that's outstanding. It's like you're not gonna get, you know, executed plans until you do A, B, C, and D for septic or you go through all the V-DOT hoops. And we're approving things because staff will tell me, why should the applicant go and pay for all these things to be done if you're going to reject it? Does that come in, come into this arena?
I don't think it's necessarily something that needs to be laid out in zoning ordinance. That's kind of just a best practice thing in the, in the planning world. Um, that's very commonly done throughout, pretty much all every community. It's like your, your approval of an SUP is dependent, is dependent upon V-DOT approval and VDH approval and all of these. So, if they don't get approval from those agencies, that SUP is not valid and that'll be listed.
Right, yeah, I, I think it's almost a process thing, but it bothersome.
Yeah.
That we're approving things that we don't know what the end result is.
Sure.
I, I, I think it's typical though. I mean, like Lisa said, you don't wanna make somebody pay for all that and then say no to them. And that puts you in an odd position where you pretty much have to vote for it. But like Chris said, it's contingent. I mean, somebody, if somebody can't pass all those other things, they're not gonna be able to build whatever it is or do whatever it is they wanna do anyway. But we can say, you know, that it's contingent upon that.
And just to, sorry, Steve's point, um, there are communities in Virginia that have an average of nine-month turnaround for their permitting processes. So, I think if you're under that, you're probably doing pretty good. Um, but that is, that, that, he brings up a good point as well. Do you all feel like you're getting enough information when you get your SUPs and your site plans and stuff like that? That is something that is regulated through the zoning ordinance. So, it's a good thing to kind of lay out to applicants so that they can see right up front, hey, before you even apply for this SUP, planning commissioner board needs to see this, this, and this. Do you all feel like you're getting good information?
I'm very pleased with our staff and what they present to us. They, they tirelessly do a lot of work to get things to us in good shape. So, I'm very pleased.
Yeah, it's like, uh, first they got their hands on it.
From the candies they provide at the meeting.
Sharon?
We don't say this about.
True.
I was just gonna say, I think we do get a very complete package from staff on the planning commission when we have something to consider. To Steve's point, the only thing that I might say, and I think we are doing more of this, but we might have a more robust online presence and process to kick off a, a citizen's request, so that if they could go online and get the information they need and fill out the applications online, it would alleviate some of the staff time the more information they could get for themselves. So that, that might be one thing that might speed the process.
Definitely. And there are, um, you can speed up the process for certain things and, and not others. So sometimes that's used as an incentive, like for housing development or something like that. But we won't dive deep into that when we get to that point. For the sake of time, I think I'll, I'll move on. But if you all think of, go home and have an idea that you didn't express tonight, please email it to Steph and she'll get it to us. So anything you think of throughout this whole process, really just, um, send it to your staff and, and they will get it to us.
Could you just quickly add something to your list?
Of course.
Private road.
Strength or weakness?
Pardon?
Strength or weakness?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Difficulty for Merrill.
Yeah, okay, yep, we'll take a look at that too.
And I don't know if this was mentioned either, but we encourage you all to come out to the, the public workshops as well. Join in with your constituents and, and sit in on discussions and listen to what they have to say. And it's always, always a courage to be involved with that, so.
Yeah.
Welcome to add whatever else you have at those, if you're good here.
And, and we'll make sure to keep reminding you of those dates, news that October, September, October.
I'll, I'll go through them again here at the end. All right, so keys to success. You all are key players in, in the success of this process. So we ask that you stay engaged from start to finish. Please inform and convey, or please inform your constituents about the update and convey any concerns they have back to your staff. Engage with your community stakeholders about the process. The planning commission will be attending bi-monthly work sessions. So please stay involved and read your packets before the meeting and come prepared with any questions you have. This is kind of, I, I feel like you all really ought to get like a little degree or something at the end of this, because you're gonna know a whole lot about zoning when we go through this process. The board will be receiving updates from staff, scheduled updates, but feel free to ask for information along the way. And, um, it's always better to deal with things upfront through the process. So don't save something for your adoption, public hearing to bring up that you have a problem with. Just bring it up early along the way so we can address it and, and fix the ordinance before we get there. So just to reiterate our upcoming schedule, um, tonight was our work session. The public survey will run from September twentieth to October twenty-fifth. The public workshops will be September twenty-third and October twenty-third. And the focus groups will be during the day on the twenty-third of September. We would like to, if we can, tonight, set a date for the next joint work session in January. Steph, I'll let Steph talk about this, she has a couple of dates for y'all to look at.
So I'll look to Chris and Steve, I know it's early to be making an agenda, but the next joint work session, just like this, to go over the public engagement, the housing study, before they start drafting the zoning ordinance, would like today work? This, that Thursday?
The Thursday in January?
That would be the fifteenth. Someone double check me, I think it's the fifteenth.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, see?
This Thursday.
Can't be trusted.
So it started like three o'clock like we normally do, is that what you?
I, I, I mean, if they would be available then, I mean, it just seems like maybe everyone can't come, but it's a day that's already built in.
What is it, the sixteenth?
Uh, what did you say?
Sixteenth is the Thursday. It would be the Thursday after the third Tuesday, so it's not always the third Thursday. The Thursday after the third Tuesday, whatever.
Well, and I also sense that perhaps, you know, we normally have.
Unless we want to set a separate date.
Well, we normally have work sessions at three, but if, if, to accommodate schedules, we need to flip that. We could do the this piece first and then we could do any work sessions we have later.
Or vice versa.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I would say give them schedules, you know, what may work best for the planning commissioners and the board. And I don't know if some of the planning commissioners may have.
Sherry works, um, Sherry has a hard time making days. So it would be better if it could be starting like at six or even five-thirty, so Sherry could be here. And Angie too.
She also works, that makes it hard.
She has, I think, a little bit more flexibility, but Sherry's like pretty, she's pretty open.
Let's just say sixteen AM, on the sixteen. Does that work for you?
You said the third, after the third Tuesday.
The Thursday after the third Tuesday.
And that's the twenty-third. Twenty-third, Jack.
Okay, sixteen.
Is it the sixteenth or the twenty-fourth?
I don't know, let's see.
The third Tuesday is the twenty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, just to find the one that first day.
Twenty-third or twenty-first? My mind's spinning.
Twenty-third. It's twenty-third.
Twenty-sixth, the twenty-third. Twenty-three, twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
January twenty-third.
And you will get a meeting notice reminders, needless to say.
Yeah.
And agendas.
Okay, so that's for the joint.
And this is assuming we don't.
Okay, then, um, we're gonna, sorry.
That'll be decided in January.
Then if we can, tonight, maybe we could set the dates for the, the drafting work sessions? So the planning commission will be coming for these six drafting workshops, every, or work sessions every other month?
Starting, I'm gonna jump in, they'll start in March, that's when it's scheduled. That is after we'll finish our comp plan work sessions, hopefully. So March, May, July, September, November?
November.
The days we have picked out, I tried to be consistent for you. If we can do it tonight, that would be awesome, but if not, we can get with Sherry as chairperson. But I mean, David, you're here, I think you could probably help make a decision. We picked out two options, they're both Wednesdays, either similar to what we've been doing, the Wednesday before your regular meeting, just like the comp plan work sessions for most part, or the Wednesday following your normal meeting night.
You're just speaking to the planning.
Just the planning.
Yes, just the planning.
Or can take a nap.
Don't be careful what you do.
Just the planning. So this would be for your, remind me guys, it's six, right?
Sure.
It's six work sessions.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Six work sessions every other month, starting in March, so we have time to plan. But what sounds better to you, having two meetings in a row, a Tuesday and a Wednesday? Or Wednesday one week, Tuesday the following week?
So like it'd be, if we have it the first Wednesday, that's the Wednesday of the site visits.
And one thing to consider, we picked the, the first Wednesday for our comp plan work sessions and we've changed them a couple of times because it's easy for us. We won't do that to them because they work with three, four other clients. So if we pick a Wednesday, we'll just keep it. Even if we don't end up having our regular meeting, if we have no applications, you'll just get a free night of your life back. We'll keep the Wednesday if that's what you want, if that's what you pick.
What you're talking about are these planning commission March meetings, work, draft work sessions, that what you're talking about?
They start March, yeah, so it'll be March.
Yeah, I'm gonna watch the schedule.
Do you have a schedule?
Yeah, I pulled it up really quick.
It'll be March, May.
So it's gonna be, so this January one will be me, you can't see my mouse cursor.
The, the January is the, um, the joint work session we just set. And in March, it'll start with just the planning commission.
March, May, July, September, November, and then January, we'll do platter revisions and then do another joint one in May, twenty-two, twenty-six.
So which Wednesday, the, the Wednesday?
So our options are the Wednesday before.
Right, which is your PC.
Or the Wednesday after.
You could pick a different day. I know that works for Sherry, again, Sherry's kind of, her schedule's pretty tight. Wednesdays tend to work for her. If you all want to look at a Monday, that's fine, it's your call. I just picked Wednesdays because they've worked in the past and it seems like a low-stakes.
Well, I guess there's my thoughts, you know, we'll please every now and then, but I'm sort of torn. The Wednesdays before, most, it seems like half of us don't show up at the site visits. So will they even show up at this meeting? Me personally, I'm gonna be at the site visits more than likely. I would almost rather do it, we have Wednesday after. Just because I run the company and I work, so I'm trying to juggle multiple things. And if I spread it a little thinner, it doesn't mess up my whole day, but that is greedy as it can be, and I know that. So I would rather Wednesday after, but I don't know if I work for anybody else.
Like you have your PC meeting on Tuesday and then do it the next morning?
Next morning.
I mean, bright side is it's not every month like the comp plan, you'll have a little briefing.
I agree, I think that makes so much sense.
So you just want to mess up one week of your life instead of.
And you might have some, a weird downtime in between the end of the site visit and the beginning of the drafting session that you wouldn't have time to go home, but, you know.
TW, you good? David?
Do you have a?
What did we decide?
All right, Victor, what do you think? You haven't decided yet.
The night after, so you have Tuesday night meeting, then you have a Wednesday night meeting.
There's a speech meeting, so.
So basically you got a site visit before the public or planning commission meeting next week. And that week of the planning commission, the next day, you've got a work session.
Yes.
Every other month.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do the.
At what time?
My mind, the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday. I'll give you the dates.
Second Wednesday of each month. And if they have some.
Of the, yeah.
Every other month.
Every other month.
We're talking evening, March twelve.
Yes, evening.
Six o'clock, just like.
Six o'clock.
Perfect, thank you.
I think I have the dates, but because I already got it wrong like seven times, I'm just gonna email it.
Good idea.
So if you go back to the schedule, it looks like you had two other dates for the board. I guess.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do those later.
Would you guys prefer the regular Tuesday or just we? I guess they, they might change their meeting schedule come January, so.
It's kind of up to you guys, those are staff update, I mean, we'll give you the information, but staff will be updating them. So y'all can work that out internally, wouldn't that work? Pretty sure that's a one hundred. I don't think so. Isn't that right, Steph? I think it's, I think it's just you guys doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on schedule for two chats.
That's why Steph was doing that. I'll go back and chat, I'll go back and chat.
We have time.
All right, any questions about anything?
I've asked, um, Mr. Whitlow, um, to get with you guys and so that we would like to send all of the planning commissioners and board a PowerPoint.
Absolutely.
It's got some really great information and dates on it.
Absolutely.
So we'll ensure you guys get a PowerPoint.
And you should have in your packets, you should have a, a rough schedule as well in there as an attachment.
Is the, so the PowerPoints not in the packet?
Attachment.
I didn't, I don't think I've printed a PowerPoint for them, but we can get it.
Attachment, is that in there that's scheduled? It's kind of just a little matrix itself, but we will get you this presentation too as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Stephanie already has it, so she can email it to you.
Oh, okay, there it goes.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all very much. I hope that this has, has allowed you to, to get some good feedback that will be helpful for the process.
Definitely.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you all for your time, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, is there, um, Steve, Lisa, is there anything else that you all would like to bring up? Now, we probably filled their ears when they did that. They're probably gonna say, we're gonna run. In the opposite direction. Um, but again, I want to extend my gratitude to staff, of course, and to the planning commission. This has been really wonderful to be able to sit with you. You all have such good experience under your belt and you're so helpful to this process. So we look forward to walking through it with you. Okay, anything from the supervisors? Mr. Whitlow?
I just need to adjourn until Wednesday, September fourth, ten o'clock.
Okay, here, I'm getting my marching orders. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting until September fourth at three o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock AM at Fairham College. So we're adjourned.